If everyone would join me in the pledge allegiance, I'd appreciate it, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Irene, can we have a roll call? And I just want to remind everybody that please mute your mics unless you're talking. Do we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Brigham. Saw your mouth move.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
You and Mayor Walter.
Here.
Could I have any conflicts of interest, councilmembers, staff?
Mr. Mayor, I believe it is on the consent. Nope, I need to get...I do have to recuse myself somewhere. And it's when we talk about the L and Ls and it's Zone 2.
Anyone else? I'll be recusing myself from item number seven, having to do with Zone 1. That's Jefferson Springs. Any other conflicts of interest? Okay, moving along. I'd like to...I'm going to suggest an agenda review and making a change. But before we do that, I just want to take the opportunity to read a statement before we get started with our meeting tonight. You know, first and foremost, I want to acknowledge that I made a disparaging remark about our Latino residents at the last council meeting. While I intended to share information about resources that are available to those who need to self-quarantine due to COVID, I certainly did not mean to offend anyone in our community. Please know that I was not...it was not my intent to make hurtful comments, and those comments do not reflect who I am nor what I believe. I apologize to the entire community and, in particular, to the Latino residents and our dedicated Latino employees for my inappropriate comments. Further, I would like to acknowledge Councilmember Cruz. Councilmember Cruz, you're there. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Cruz for calling my attention to the statements I made. I recognize that my actions were insensitive. For that, I apologize. My "apologize" is more than just a gesture. I hope it's a starting point for collaborative conversations about the governance of our city. Further, I believe that this is a timely opportunity, not only for me, but for all of us as public servants, to recommend ourselves to work towards promoting respect for each other. And with that, I thank you. Under Mayor's report, I have another statement that I'd like to read. But I just wanted to apologize for those comments that I made about our Latino community. And I'm going to take the advantage of the chair at this point and rearrange the agenda a little bit and ask the city manager to give his report at this time. David?
Mayor, thank you. Thank you for your comments, and I take note of your desire to work collaboratively with your fellow councilmembers. I think in that vein, I would like to announce that with the assistance of the city attorney, we've arranged for training for the city council that focuses on the principles and practices of anti-bias training and implicit bias. We are lucky to be able to obtain the services of a very well esteemed attorney and principal with Myers-Nave. Myers-Nave is the firm that represents the city and is our legal counsel, most specifically Camille Pateen. Camille is the chair of the Labor and Employment Practice, as well as the Workplace Investigation Practice with Myers-Nave. She's a highly sought-after attorney and specializes in high-profile investigations involving government officials, executives, and high-level employees of public organizations like the city. She's very familiar with addressing corrective actions to help our workplace and ensure that we are in compliance and implement diversity, equity, and inclusion programs. With that, she routinely provides advice and training to employers on a wide range of personnel matters arising under state and federal law with an emphasis on discrimination and social media issues. And she's a frequent presenter of conferences and seminars, addressing in particular implicit bias, social media, and ethics. And so I want to thank Jose, our city attorney, for working to obtain... to be able to bring that important training for our council. Along that lines, I'd also like to announce that, under my direction, I'm going to require all city staff to participate in implicit bias and anti-bias training, including our professionals, our senior staff, as well as our police department. So I endeavor to make sure that we are well-trained and address all the implicit biases that we have so we can do our best to rid that from our perspective. So that concludes my announcement, Mayor. I will have additional comments later. But I would like to turn it back to you as the mayor to continue your announcements and statements.
It might be on mute, Gus.
I'm sorry. The mic was off. Earlier this afternoon, Vice Mayor Turner, Chief Ferguson, and myself had the opportunity to join eight other cities in Santa Rosa for a press conference, where we all...all the mayors pledged not only to join my brother's keeper, but to implement the four points, which is review, engage, report, and reform. So Jason, thank...both Jasons. Jason Turner, Jason Ferguson, thank you for joining me this afternoon. I was glad that we could represent our city. You don't have to be the mayor to take this pledge. I know Councilmember Bagby has already signed up and has taken it. So I recommend you to go to President Obama...Obama's page, which is www-obama.org/mayorpledge. And that will give you the form to go ahead and join if you so wish. David, was there anything else? Chief Ferguson, did you want to make a statement possibly about anything at this time?
Yes, Mayor. David, did you want to jump ahead? Was there something more that you wanted to add before?
Chief, please proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I would just like to state that our staff is fully aware and has reviewed the mayor's pledge as well and are committed to continuing our review and assessment of our policies and our practices. I want to assure this community and this council that our current policies and practices continue to be consistent with 21st century policing principles, and we align with the eight can't wait requests. For instance, effective yesterday, we removed the carotid control hold as a use-of-force option from our policy. Our new policy, which has been posted to our website, will reflect that change. We also have done many things, as I said, aligned with the eight can't wait request, starting with body camera policy. We purchased body cameras in 2016, and we equipped every officer with these in an effort to increase transparency and public trust. We have specific policy regarding bias-based policing, and all the police officers here at Cloverdale Police Department have been trained in this particular area. We have also been trained in de-escalation. This was based on Assembly Bill 392. Basically, it set new use-of-force standards for us that we must adhere to. I know some of the questions or some of the parts of eight can't wait had a lot to do with evaluating the situation using other available resources and techniques, if reasonably safe to do so. And I will assure you that we are doing that and complying with the new standard under AB 392. We do have use-of-force policy that outlines 19 different factors that we must take into consideration before using any type of force under any given circumstance, and those are strictly adhered to. As far as duty to intervene, our policy is very specific that we do have the policy indicating that there is a duty to intervene when there is something that is taking place that an officer realizes is excessive. We also have a very comprehensive report-writing policy. It covers everything from how you must write a report to ensuring that a supervisor must review, write an independent report, and if it involves use-of-force to the degree that it results in death or great bodily injury, it must also be sent to the California Department of Justice. Those are already in our policies, and we adhere to those. And lastly, transparency. This was part of the Senate Bill 978. We are required to conspicuously post our policies, training, upon our website, which we do have currently. And we make other types of information available, and we always will continue to do so. I think it's important for our community to know that we are working together for a safe community. It's our value statement, and we believe in it. We're committed to honesty, integrity, and communication with those we serve. And that's the end of the report.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmembers, if there's no questions, we're going to go ahead and move on with the rest of the agenda. Next is the consent calendar. I'm sorry. Next is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council on items that do not appear on tonight's agenda may do so. Irene, do we have anyone in the Zoom meeting that would like to make a comment?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
How about here at CPAC? Anybody would like to make a comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one rise, we'll go ahead and move to the next item, which is proclamations. And tonight, we have one of the month of June is recognized as LGBT Pride Month. And David, there's a resolution...I'm sorry, a proclamation, if you care to read it. I appreciate it.
Mayor, members of council, I'm happy to read the proclamation tonight. The proclamation is the city council proclamation proclaiming June 2020 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Pride Month. Whereas the month of June is designated as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender, or otherwise LGBT, Pride Month in commemoration of the Stonewall Rebellion, which occurred during the weekend of June 27th to 29th in 1969 in New York City, giving birth to the modern LGBT civil rights movement. And whereas since 1994, the month of June has marked a time when all those committed to justice and the equality of every member of the human family joined together to celebrate the notable achievements of the millions who make up the global LGBT community, including their valuable service to America's cities, counties, states, and nation. And whereas LGBT pride is often defined as the positive stance against the discrimination, violence, and hatred, too many still experience every day that fosters self-affirmation, dignity, visibility, and social community while encouraging celebration of diversity, all of which support the ongoing struggle for equal rights of LGBT people and their families. And whereas cities around our county, state, nation, and the globe honor LGBT Pride Month with parades, festivals, community days, proclamations, and other public recognitions, which especially highlight the wide range of contributions that LGBT citizens, LGBT-owned businesses, and LGBT public servants make to their economies, communities, and nations. And whereas the city of Cloverdale has a diverse LGBT community and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for all people in the community. And whereas many of the residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the city of Cloverdale who contribute to the enrichment of our city are part of the LGBT community. And whereas various advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of lesbians, gay men, bisexual, transgender, but there continues to be some opposition against people from around the world, making it important for cities like Cloverdale to stand up and show support for our residents who are affected. And whereas June has become a symbolic month in which lesbian women, gay men, bisexual people, transgender people, and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride, and now therefore be resolved that Gus Walter, as Mayor of the city, do hereby proclaim on behalf of the Cloverdale City Council, June 2020, as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Pride Month in Cloverdale, and urge all citizens to join together in ending prejudice everywhere it may exist to respect the rights of all people and to celebrate the diversity and resulting cultural richness of our city presented this day, June 10th, 2020, Mayor.
Thank you, David. Next is our student liaison report. I see Ashton is with us.
Yes. I prepared a short...a short little outgoing... I thought a short little outgoing speech to summarize my experience and how...what I thought of this whole experience and how grateful I am for it. So am I good to go?
Yes, you're good to go.
Okay. Serving as the student liaison to the Cloverdale City Council has been one of the most enriching and insightful periods of my life. It was a period of great transformation for me, both as a citizen and a human, in which I nurtured and cultivated the spirit of civic engagement. And looking back, I was given an opportunity that is rarely grasped by my peers in this day and age, a platform to serve as a voice for others, the ability to speak on their behalf and to bring forth their hopes and grievances. And I was given the opportunity to guide and help enact meaningful change, no matter how small, as a result. Throughout most of my life and up until late high school, I was what one would consider a disaffected citizen. I was ill-informed on many of the events in my school district, let alone my town and community. So when I initially applied for this position, I knew little of what to expect beyond the basics of representation and reporting. However, my perception of and expectations for the task soon changed as I found myself drawn in time and time again by the many heartfelt, passionate presentations and exchanges that followed. I was taken aback and found myself humbled time and time again as people champion causes greater than themselves, all in the hopes of bettering the lives of the many, often at the expense of their own. Whether it was the entreaties of the young or the old, each and every discussion carried with it a sense of gravity that was fully considered and given attention to. The experience here that I have received elevated me, and it empowered me. It made me want to be a better citizen and to educate myself more on not only the topics that I was tasked with understanding and opining on, but also on those that it would seem unusual for someone my age to take an interest in. At the conclusion of it all, I find myself more inspired to be proactive in solving the issues that plague my community. I find within me a new desire to use all the knowledge that I have gained for the betterment of not just myself, but my whole community as well. And all I can do is express my heartfelt thanks and gratitude for this opportunity, for I would not be the same man or citizen that I am today had I not chosen this undertaking. I would not have learned to appreciate the lessons in civic responsibility, engagement, and accountability that the sometimes harsh exchanges here have afforded me. So I say to the members of the city council and to the members of this community, thank you for this chance to learn, to grow, and to cultivate within me new passions and to experience new viewpoints.
Ashton, that was very thoughtful of you to write that. And I have to say, I appreciate the work that you and Emma have done over the last year coming to the city council meetings and giving us your report. I'm going to open it up here to the councilmembers in a second, but I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the city school subcommittee for keeping this program alive, and I look forward to the liaisons that are going to be joining us next year. Councilmembers, did you want to address the...
Emma has a reading, too.
I didn't hear you.
Emma has a reading, too. Emma, could you come on?
Hi, Marta. Can you hear me okay? All right.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just go ahead then. And the decision to apply for a student liaison position wasn't made out of a love for government or politics, but out of a love for my community. I saw this as a way to meet the people in my community who genuinely cared about helping others. That being said, I didn't have high expectations for our local government when it came to listening to the ideas of a 17-year-old. Too many people my age are told that their opinions don't matter, so there's no real point in formulating them to begin with. I have been lucky enough to have a mother who drowned out such pessimistic ideology and taught me to cultivate and voice new ideas. Fortunately, I have learned that the city council shares my mother's progressive approach to new ideas. I was shocked at the warmth and transparency that I received from the members of the city council. Each member made an effort to speak with me about topics I was passionate about, such as hygiene, nutrition, and the environment, all things we had discussed at school but never really made any action on. Beyond one-on-one conversations, I learned a great deal just from sitting back and listening. At every meeting, the members of this council demonstrated by humor and kindness are the best tools a person has to negotiate. The unique and unapologetic trains of thought that each individual brings to this stage is what gives me hope for progress. So despite not coming into this with a love for government or politics, I learned that in a small town like ours, the government has to be ingrained in the community in order to succeed. Even as I continue on to the JC in the fall, my ambition is still to be an active part of this community. I don't have to attend CHS to still care about what happens to it. Hopefully, in my future career, whether it be journalism, marketing, or foreign aid, still really unsure, I will still be as passionate about this community as all the members of the city council have taught me to be. And that's all.
Emma, thank you very much. And I'm sorry I missed you. I didn't see your tile up there. But you and Ashton, like I said earlier, have been a great asset to the city council, and we appreciate it. Councilmembers, would anybody like to say any parting remarks?
When it's my turn?
Councilmember Cruz, and then Councilmember Turner.
Well, I am extremely happy with Ashton and Emma. I'm very happy to have been able to work with them one-on-one, share some of my thoughts and ideas, and to hear them and to hear their ambition, their dreams. And they know that I'm here for them for the long run. So a lot of success to you. You know, I'm still a teacher. I will always be a teacher, and I'm available for anything you need. Thank you again for your service and for your seriousness. I hope that you help us recruit a couple more students that would be as helpful and as insightful as the two of you have been.
Thank you.
I just want to share that it's been absolutely amazing to have both of you join us on the dais and really participate in the conversations about real issues that are really happening right now. It's one thing to participate from a distance, but the really in-the-weeds approach that you both took with all of our issues really showed me that despite your intentions from the get-go, something grabbed hold to where you knew that there was a gap here that could only be filled by your point of view. I found myself continuously inspired after the onset of COVID-19 and the resulting shelters in place that closed your schools and caused you to change the trajectory of how you really did everything leading up to the end of your senior year. And you have shown me that resiliency comes in many forms, and I am greatly inspired by both of you and what you accomplished. And I wish nothing but the best. And only because I happen to work with Emma's mom, I have told her to spend as much time with you as she can because how fast and how far you're going to go places is entirely up to you. And I can only assume the same for Ashton. So again, well done. And it has been an absolute pleasure to share it this time with you.
Councilmember Bagby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to tell both of you, you know...
Thank you so much.
I have appreciated how you've been prepared in your professionalism and what you've brought to this job. You took it very seriously, and you made real contributions. It's just really been a pleasure having you. Also, I just want to make sure to check in with you. You both have registered to vote, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'll make sure that you remind your friends as well because I think you've had a real privilege here in having literally...not a front row seat. Like, no, you're like in the main row. You've been with us for this past year, and you know how important it is to be prepared, to be engaged. So you have a responsibility now to take that message out and tell your friends how important it is to be civically engaged. So I don't know where Ashton is going, but Emma, you're also charged with getting involved with student government at Santa Rosa Junior College. It's very active. It's very dynamic, and they do incredibly good work. So I expect to see you, your name in the paper, and I expect to see you involved. And Ashton, I don't expect any less of you. I just don't know where you're planning on going next year. Do you want to share that with us?
Ashton, do you have a school skipped out?
Or a gap year? Oh, yeah, sorry. My intention is to also go to the junior college like Emma. I will probably try to participate in whatever government they have there, too. I'm sorry I didn't make that clear earlier.
No, not at all. No, you guys, you keep each other accountable, and we're looking forward to seeing great things from you both. Congratulations, and good luck next year.
Thank you, councilmen. Let's take a look at the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be approved with one motion unless a council member or a member of the public wishes to have the item discussed separately. Anyone from the internet that would like to have an item on the consent calendar pulled, Irene?
No hands are raised.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience here at CPAC that would like to have an item pulled and discussed separately? Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next is communications. We have... What are in the packet? But Irene, I think we've received a considerable number of correspondence, did we not? Everybody was actually emailed those letters that we received over the last week with reference to eight can't wait and the whole situation with George Floyd.
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. We received... We'll show it briefly here.
Irene, I'm sorry. We couldn't hear Gus there. It sounded like he was muted, so we don't have this in context.
Six communications from people listed here on the screen.
So councilmembers, you have those letters. If you receive any... If you receive any, please make sure you send them to Irene so they could be made part of the records. Jason, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, forgive me, Mayor. I was alerting that we couldn't hear you, so we didn't quite have the context on what Irene was answering, but it's since been made clear.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is new business, item number seven. It's Clovedale Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Public Hearing, Approval of Annual Engineers Report, and Resolutions Authorizing Assessment for Fiscal Year 2021. And I think this item is, oh, tell me, this item is marks. Mr. Rincon?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. This is a continuation of the last council meeting's public hearing that we have for the annual landscape and lighting assessment district. So what you have before you is our three resolutions to confirm the assessments and put forth on the tax rolls for the coming year, fiscal year. Again, this is a continuation of the last council meeting's report. So if there's any questions on it, I know there may be some public comments on it, but I'm available to answer the questions the best I can. And I don't know if Coastland is online to help with the question and answers, if there are any.
Yes, Paul is actually with us.
Okay, so then this is more of an introduction, and Paul can take it from here.
I'm just sitting in an echo here, so I apologize for my hesitation. I know Paul is with us, and Susie is with us. And at the Finance, Police, Admin Subcommittee, we opted to get the questions that were asked at the last city council meeting answered. And that would be the short-term goal, so that we could get these three resolutions approved. And then on a long-term basis, we were going to look for some remedies to the concerns that some of the folks, particularly in the cottages, have. So with that being said, David, Susie, there were some questions asked, and I'm just wondering what type of response we have for those folks this evening.
Absolutely. So I'll unmute. There were in particular questions at the previous council meeting on May 27 that focused on the Zone Three cottages budget. And I'll do my best to paraphrase the comments. And I'm sure the speakers that are present today in the chambers may want to re-raise those issues. Generally, there was a concern about the level of maintenance activities that have been performed in the district. And in response to that, I think council did refer that for further discussion to the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee, Mayor, as you indicated. And we're going to look at and evaluate options for that particular zone and address whether some of the costs that are embedded in the budget relative to employees can be evaluated to lower them through contracting, but also look at other potential options. The other issues that were raised were relative to the budgets for both utilities, gas and electric, as well as utilities and water. I think the concern that was raised was the change in the budget for fiscal year 1920 to the current year, which is 2021. And also, the budget for the utilities, gas, and electric is staying consistent with the previous budget amount, given that there were two meters that were eliminated, and therefore the charges were reduced for that. The staff's response in evaluating this further was that the meter charges for the gas and electric were relatively minimal. And given the increase in the cost of electricity, it basically offset one another, and therefore the report was not changed. It would really result in a very de minimis change in that $650 figure that was in the 2021 budget compared to the 1920. With respect to water, there was a concern expressed about the dollar amount and the change, which was about $11,000. And what's important to note is that the fiscal year 1920 budget had a misallocated cost. I know if there was, when you pull that budget, you'll notice that some of the expenses for water were paid in the previous fiscal year, and so that expense wasn't picked up in that particular year. And so that budget amount really should be about $3,500 more. This year, again, looking at water use, what we do as staff is take a look at the water use to date. We annualize that expense to see where we're going to land at the end of the year, doing our best to estimate water use through the year. And our estimate, it lands pretty closely to that $33,500 that's in the budget. I'm happy to review those figures in those reports with residents, but we wanted to ensure that there was adequate budget to cover those water expenses. With that said, we make every effort to address our water use within the landscape and lining districts. It is our goal, particularly now that we're moving into drought conditions, to address water leaks and be as efficient as possible with water use. But it does change from year to year, especially as we have had drier conditions. We tend to use more water to make sure that the vegetation is maintained. So that's staff's response relative to, I think, the three comments that were made, most specifically focusing on Zone Three, the cottages. But I welcome any additional comments from our finance director, Susie Home, our city engineer, Mark Rincon, or Paul Wade, our designated engineer for the LNL.
I know you and I had discussed this about making an adjustment now and how it would be cost prohibitive, really. The cost to make the change would actually outpace the amount of savings. But share with us again where that excess money that was collected is now sitting.
Technically, we didn't collect excess funds. It was a function of how much we budget, and if there are savings, because we don't expend as much as budget, it stays within the fund balance for the particular zone. The benefit of that is that it can be used either to make a contribution to future costs, and you'll see that in the budget under contribution from annual reserves, so that it offsets potential future increases in future budgets. But I guess what I want to be clear is that any funds that aren't used do stay within the LNL zone and are not used outside of that. We're legally required to keep all funds budgeted, all funds specific to that zone in that zone budget. So they're not lost. So when the cost stays good, and we seek opportunities, and I want to pick, I know a member of the public that's here today to provide my cost savings because it does help reduce otherwise some of the inflationary impacts, particularly that we're seeing with PG&E for our electrical charges.
Okay. Susie or Paul, any comments you'd like to add to that before I open it up to the council and the public?
No, I think David did a really good job of explaining all of the issues that were brought forward or the questions that were brought forward. Yeah, and I just want to reiterate that if the money is not spent or if the water charges come in less than what were budgeted, then the funds stay in that account, and they don't leave the account. They would be in the reserves for the next fiscal year.
Mayor, this is Paul Wade. I can give a brief presentation at the council's pleasure. It's really not new information from the May 13 meeting. The council's pleasure just to move to the public hearing. I'm good with that.
May need to unmute.
Vice Mayor Turner has his hand raised.
Yes.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Turner, you should be.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I couldn't hear Gus again, so I apologize. My question is more like a, like just a practical question, not practical, that's not the right word, but it doesn't have to do with the budget that just popped into my head. So I'm willing to wait till a more appropriate time, but it's kind of just towards the public works director, if now's good.
Hey, thank you. Councilmembers? Okay, let me open it up to the internet. Irene, do we have anybody looking to say a few words?
We have Bob Cox.
Mr. Cox?
All right. Can you hear me now? All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Bob.
All right. Just looking at the last column, this is probably a question from Paul Wade because I know he's right on top of this. The ending reserve generally is a percentage, and I thought they tried to keep it in the 20% to 25% range. And I see that there are three zones, which is 0%, one at 2%. I believe that's a little low, and should that next year be adjusted quite heavily, I would think. And that's my question.
Mayor, do you want me to address that?
Yes, please, Paul.
So five of the seven zones are currently at their maximum assessments that can be assessed without pulling the, validating the property owners. And so while the goal is to have those reserves at 25%, we don't have a lot of room to work with. They've been drawing down to zero. We have three zones with general fund contributions. Vineyards is likely to join that next year. So unless the budgets can be reduced or other measures taken, we don't have any flexibility to try and build those reserves up.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to the members of the public that are here with us at the Clovedale Performing Arts Center. If you have any questions, please step up. The public comment section is open now. Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close. Oh, I'm sorry. It might be the mask. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on this item, just step up to the podium and give us your name and tell us what you'd like to share.
Good evening. My name is John Moke. I'm a president of the Buckeye Circle and the cottages. And as you recall, or you might recall, the last time we met, we discussed an item on your budget, and the light item was water use. And what we discovered there is that the budget has increased by $10,000 for the next fiscal year, 2021. I went through your footnotes. I noted at the time that the budget for 2019 and 2020 was $22,000, and in actuality, you only spent $17,000 for that year. I went through your footnotes to see if I could detect anything that would support the $10,000 increase. And as reported to you, no new annexation of proposed Zone Threes, no significant changes. There's a build-out, and everything seems to be the same. So I can't find anything there that speaks to an increase in the water budget. In historical context, I'm looking at your budget and actuals for the fiscal year 2016, 17. The budget there was $13,000, actually spent almost $12,000. 2017, 18, the budget was $15,000. You spent $20,000, and it could have been a drought here. 2018, 19, $17,500, you spent $14,000, and then last year, we went over that, $22,000, you spent $17,000. So the historical context doesn't tell me anything. It certainly does not point to that you're going to be needing more money for the water district. Last year's does not indicate any changes and a reason to increase the budget by $10,000. I have not had an answer to this, and I would like an answer to this because it seems there is something very, very wrong there. So in closing, I would like to tell you that in the spirit of good governance and proper accounting principles, I urge for an accurate budget for implementation for fiscal year 2021 and a proper representation for fees charged to the citizens of Clovedale. Because I think they need an answer to this. We don't have an answer at this point. And a closer scrutiny of historical data, present data, and your forecast for next year, it doesn't make sense. So I'm looking forward to a response from you or some of the experts that Irene, thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah, that was it.
Anyone else at this point might do ask a question?
Okay, she already pushed it one. I'm Suzanne Black. I live in the cottages. And I attended the last meeting. I would echo what he says. I did not hear an answer in what has been provided so far about the $10,000. But the only question I really have this evening is to need to know from the five council members whether you received the email that I sent in the last week, received and read it. I don't know what the protocol is. I thought maybe I'd have somebody say, hey, got your email. But because it's the first time I've ever emailed council people, so can you tell me a few?
I don't know personally. I'm sure my fellow councilmen look at their emails and can give back clues on that. Was that basically?
Yeah, it's a follow-up. I'm the one who started cleaning up the cottages on my own. Hector was here at that last meeting, and then he came and talked to me the next day. So that's who I am, and I spoke briefly. So it was just a follow-up email wanting to address my concerns. I'm even more convinced that, and I've been talking to a lot of my neighbors that were just absolutely opposed to an increase based on the absence of any consistent maintenance at this time. Thanks.
Dan, did you want to ask a question?
Right when he makes his way to the podium. The finance director has provided me a current trial balance report through April, and we're already at about just under $22,000 through April in terms of water usage that's built to the Zone Three cottages. So I just wanted to address that. And then obviously, there's two months, two additional months of building. And traditionally, May and June are, tend to be. And traditionally, May and June are, tend to be on the higher side of water use compared to particularly the water lines in the early days.
John, did you hear that respond?
No, I heard that. No, I'm just one of my donors that I had.
Man?
And this is where you want me to look up here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you can hear me. Okay. Hi, my name is Christine Brachalini, and I also am from the cottages. And we've been, my husband and I have been sharing information with the board. And since the fiscal year is coming to an end, we wanted to take advantage of sharing a little more about the landscape that's going on over there in the cottages. It's a very large, spread-out development, and it is got a lot of landscaping. And so, in general, it's a challenge to maintain. And in addition, it has gotten very overrun, as I said last time. And so there's a lot of catch-up work that's going to have to be done just to get back to normal. I was, where we live, we see part of the area that's worked on, and we were happy to see Hector and his crew out there a couple of times. But it is coming to the end of the fiscal year, so we're hoping that there will be more cleanup being done because there's a lot going on in that area. So that's, the first goal is to continue with that cleanup until at least the end of the fiscal year, and then, of course, just turn right around and keep going into the next fiscal year. So we want to, oh, and one of the things that is happening as far as creating extra work is the fact that there's, over the time, a lot of native plants have just been taking over. And so, you know, it's not just plants that, you know, happen to get there, but that's part of what's happening in there. So it's a, it's a very large development, and if, one of the things that we have been thinking about is if it can't be maintained because of the size of it and the amount of work, et cetera, that we were, you know, we were wondering if it was time, and we talked about this at the last meeting, about moving on from this as the way of handling it. And well, first of all, hiring a company, an outside company to come in instead of the city workers. We know they have a lot, and they go in a lot of different directions. And so we talked about the idea of hiring somebody. And I don't know if anything has, you know, come of that or not.
Discussion a couple of weeks ago.
But the people that we talk to in our development are fine about it. It's a matter of getting things done. And that's, that's our goal, and that's what we're watching out for.
Well, the way we address that, can you hear me? Melanie, can you hear me?
It's better, thank you.
I still, I think you need to.
The way we addressed it at the last finance subcommittee meeting, is our goal?
Yeah, the mic is picking you up.
The goal was to, let's get this year taken care of.
And then what we want to do is come up with a long-term plan. You are more than welcome to seek outside services to keep that lighting and landscape district up. It's a procedure. And before you venture onto that procedure, I think it's really important that we get you the information on how you have to do that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure there's a process.
Yes, the city attorney at the last meeting mentioned that you just don't go out and hire somebody. I mean, it's a process. You need to vote of the residents there. So, but, but I think our goal is to get this year approved. And then we're going to step back and look at it. One of the things that we were also talking about was taking certain portions of the upkeep and contracting that out with a landscaper, if we could do that as a city. So we're going to work on it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions, Dan?
Dan Brachalini lives in the cottages. And the budget this year for the cottages is, is the highest it's ever been at $111,000. That's, now we're talking about some pretty serious money here. And the cost for the employees is over $51,000. And I just wanted to know who we're paying with that money and how many hours we are actually buying. And I did some detective work, and what I did is I used the staffing allocation sheet here from your draft budget, and it shows the allocation for the lighting and landscape district. And we are paying for seven positions. We're paying 5% to the city manager, finance HR analyst, public works, and city engineer. We're paying, this is for the whole, for the whole district. We're paying six, almost six and a half percent for a utility worker, one and two. Now, these five positions, the allocations are the same. They've been the same since 2014-15. There's no change in those allocations. But now there are two other workers. They're the landscape maintenance lead and assistant. And of course, most of the, most of the time is going to fall on these two individuals. But these two allocations do change. And so I did a little study, and I went back, I went back to 2015, 2014-15, and looked at the allocation there and brought forward, and I discovered that the allocations for these two individuals has gone down. And it has gone down by about 280 hours. I use the staffing here, and I can, I can calculate the hours of each of these positions. And so over those years, the staffing, the allocations have gone down about 280 hours. And that's reflected in these staffing allocations. Okay, there's no question there. That's what they are. And then when I look at the, at the cost, based on the engineer report, even though the staff, the allocations went down 280 hours, the cost went up over $20,000. So that's pretty good. You can work less and earn more. So that's really a question. Why, why is that happening, that those costs are more with less hours? Then the question is, why are the hours going down? We need more hours out there to fix up our landscaping, but the allocations are going down. Well, what, what the city manager does to determine the allocation for next year is they go back on a three-year basis, and they look at the actual hours that were worked. Well, the allocations are going down because the guys are not putting in as many hours as the allocation suggests. And so I looked at, I asked for how many hours have been working, have the guys been working? And I find that they are not working the number of hours that are being allocated. Those allocated hours are the hours that we're paying for. Okay? In the, in the engineering report, there's a cost there, and that cost represents the hours. But in 2014-15, according to my calculations, we were short 268 hours. This is the two, the two individuals. Next year, 370 hours short. Next year, 342, 306. Last year, we were short 461 hours. These are hours we're paying for, but we're not getting. And so when you say that the money stays in the budget if we don't use it, that's not true when it comes to employee costs. Because on the detailed sheet right here, every two weeks, money leaves our pot of money, and it goes to Public Works. And so for 2018-19, our budget, and this is in the engineering report, was $49,385. At the end of the year, $46,489 left our, left our reserve. So the city spent all but about $26,000, $2700 of our budget. This is for the cottages now, okay? But we were short 188 hours. So you can't continue to take money out of our account every two weeks to go to Public Works because you're, we're getting shortchanged on the deal. You've got to change this and only pay for the hours worked. Otherwise, you keep taking money from us, and we don't get these hours. So I'm recommending that when it comes to voting for this next budget, that there's a no vote. Because this, this process is just going to continue on, and the city is going to take more money out of our, our fund, and we're not going to get, get the work done. So please, do not vote for this budget. Thank you.
Stan, would you like to respond to that?
Sorry, my, my, the microphone next to you. For the other council members, you do. The laptop.
Sorry. Dan, that's, that's a lot of numbers you threw at us, and I have no idea what to tell you. It's simply the fact that I know our employee costs go up every year with coal raises, and I expect that to increase. I know the city manager, the city clerk, everybody that touches the lighting and landscape district, a portion of their pay has to come out of that. I'm not sure if we have an answer for you on that tonight. Dave, do you or Suzie have any comments on that?
Mayor, happy to comment. First, I have not had the opportunity to review the data by Mr. Brachalini. I'm more than happy to review and validate or invalidate the data if I was provided the opportunity to do so. It's always helpful, and I appreciate that collaboration and working together to really evaluate the data. What we do in terms of labor costs is what we call, what I like to call smoothing. It's a three-year rolling average of actual time spent in the district, in the zone, that's specifically accounted for almost on a, on almost a minute basis by our staff, that is provided so that we kept very detailed records of actual time spent. And it's done in a three-year rolling average, which helps reduce both spikes and drops so that you're not fluctuating year after year, you're smoothing it out. Again, any labor costs that are billed, you get removed because of how we do payroll. But again, the, the actual costs are reflective of the budgeted costs in each of the zones based on the time spent. So for example, if this year we spent zero time, then that three-year rolling average would reflect zero time this year, and you'd see a substantial reduction in the hours of the, those staff that are spent doing maintenance work. It should be noted, I think there was a question relative to senior staff's allocation. We do engage in quite a bit of discussion with, with residents, like Mr. Brachalini, and that, that time is reflected in the, in the allocation that you see in the budget.
My name is Brent Fernoski. I came here not expecting to speak, but just to listen. However, I don't really know what the numbers are. I haven't done the work, but I know that Mr. Brachalini has put a lot of time into it. And I can tell you that the landscaping does not look good. And it would seem to me that it's very possible that the hours are not being put in because I know the guys try, but I rarely see them there, and the landscaping is not good. My goal is to live in a neighborhood where our landscaping is kept up and kept clean. I'm just asking for it to be cleaned up and just look respectful of our neighborhood. Because most of the people in our neighborhood take very good care of their property and take pride in their property. And then you look at the landscaping, and there's weeds, and there's things that don't belong. It's very messy. So with the big discrepancies that Mr. Brachalini thinks we have, and with no real answers from you guys, I agree with him. We should vote no until everybody can be on a level playing field and have the same goals in mind, which, it's not so much for me about the money, it's more about getting the landscaping looking respectable of our properties.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on this item? John, come on up. You've done this before.
I just wanted to have a clarification of, a comment that the city manager made earlier about the water. Could you repeat that so I understand it properly?
$22,000 year-to-date?
So the question that Luke raised was a clarification of the comments that were made by myself, and what I indicated to date was that approximately $22,000 has been spent through April on water usage for this current fiscal year.
I thought I heard that properly, and I have to say that that is a sad comment. Because if you go by the neighborhood and you look at the, you look at the landscaping, and I go by there every day, it is really not in good shape. And it doesn't look like $22,000 has been spent on water, unless you have been watering that species there, which is very possible, because I looked at some of the plant material, and it shouldn't even be there, it's dead. So then we can go back to the comments I made last year, and just take a look at the landscape program from a whole different perspective, and start with a blank piece of paper. And then the blank piece of paper should be headed up by the words, "Less is best." Take a lot of stuff out and do not replan. Take stuff out that doesn't belong there. Take stuff out that's dead. If it is, take a lot and then cap the water, and then take a look, fill whatever is left there with some bark, and then take a look and see what it needs and see where you are. You cannot keep going the way you're going now. You're spending $22,000 on water in the fiscal year, the budget year is not over yet. Your own spending money that you've allocated, you've got two more months to go, and you get nothing for it. It looks terrible. So take another look at the whole thing. Turn it upside down, throw away the old, and start with a new blanket.
Thank you, John. Anyone else step up to the podium, please, and share with us? John, just, Dan, just come up here.
Yeah, I want to, I would like to make another comment about the water, too. Many years ago, we had a drought. I don't know if you remember that, but the guys used less than half the water that was budgeted. And guess what? The plants are still there. Turn the water off. We don't need to be spending $33,000 on water. You're watering weeds, you're watering empty space. Invest the money. Invest the money on mulch. And I don't mean a little scattering. I'm saying three, four inches. It's going to smother some of the grass that you're allowing to grow because no one is spraying it. And also the mulch will preserve the water. You can cut the water by turning the dang controllers off. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else like to make a comment? Just step up to the podium. See, no one. I'm going to close the public comment. I'm going to bring it back and I'm going to ask staff with Zone 3, for all of the lighting and landscape districts.
When do they have to be approved?
The...
Do we know again?
Yes. And I would encourage all the way in. In order for the assessments to be effective, they need to be approved by the third year this year, between 2020. And if council doesn't approve it by that time, then it would just ask whether the city could implement the assessments that are set forth in the engineering reports. Paul, please feel welcome to add.
Mayor, one additional comment that I have not shared that I think is important. And I know Mr. Mook is quite aware of this because we had this conversation and discussion during the previous workshop. And that was the transition that we made last year from chemical pesticides to organic herbicides. We knew that going in that the cost associated with that transition would more than double the expense relative to utilizing the organic version of the herbicides. And that it would also likewise have an impact on the actual weed growth that we're experiencing and seeing within the district. That is a natural outcome, we believe, as associated with its use. We've tried our best to minimize the use because organic herbicides are almost four times the cost of the synthetic versions, which a number of residents had expressed concern about during workshops. And it was also, you know, I think well-identified that there would likely be additional weed growth because of our transition. And, you know, again, we saw it as a way to be more friendly towards the environment and address concerns relative to use of synthetic pesticides that we heard from another, a number of residents in that, particularly in Zone 3. But it does come with, it does come with the cost and it's frankly not as effective. And I'm not trying to be, trying to be a salesperson for synthetic pesticides, but that is reality.
No, and Hector advised us of that, that it would take double the spray, if not triple, to control the weeds. So if we don't approve Zone 3, would the old assessment stay or does that disappear as well? Do we know? Jose?
If you wanted to keep the old assessment, you would actually need to amend the resolution in order to implement the old assessment and not the new one.
Okay. All right. Well, I've closed the public comment section. So now I'm going to bring it back to city council members. Please just raise your hands and be more than happy for you to weigh in on this. Councilmember Bagby, please.
Well, just first order of business for housekeeping. I just wanted to let Ms. Black know that we did receive her correspondence. It was addressed to, you know, each of the council members. And I normally forward those immediately to the clerk and I just, I missed that one. So my apologies, but I had archived it for, and I read it in its entirety and I archived it for future reference. So I just wanted to let her know that her message was received. And yeah, again, it's been forwarded to the clerk to be made part of the record. And to just sort of make a general comment, I mean, I hear from, you know, and I certainly, you know, understand that there are some, you know, concerns with the quality of the landscaping right now. But I think that there are two overriding factors. You know, one is that we did ban synthetic pesticides in response to community demand. And we knew that there was going to be a transparent, you know, a transitionary period where we were going to need to, and I completely agree with Mr. Brachalini. I mean, we should be seeing, you know, thick mulch, cutback on water where we're not using it, you know, all of those really good land management and landscaping management practices. And I know that we are transitioning to that, you know, but we're also seeing the results of COVID-19 isolation. There are just, the facts on the ground are that the landscaping crews were limited in what they were able to do because of the health orders. And so they are weeks behind. So what we have is a compound situation. It's not that it's twice as bad because we haven't been able to get to it. It's probably three or four times as bad. And it just, it's, you know, it's outside of our control. So, you know, I'm in favor of moving forward as the, you know, as the mayor originally suggested. And then we do need to go back and figure out, you know, what are some remedies that we can make? You know, in a, how are we going to be able, how are we going to be able to catch up this year with the work that's going to be done? And then, you know, how do we move forward? And the fact is, is that, you know, this legislation, is it from like 1972, Jose? That, this is pretty old California legislation. The fact is there are not lighting and landscape districts anymore because it's just not the most ideal way of doing this. And so, you know, let's, so I'd like to see us move forward with the budget as it is this year because we are on a deadline. And then let's continue to work with the residents and come up with a solution that's maybe midterm to get us out of this, you know, the limitations from the COVID crisis and, you know, basically a man hour, not only a man hour shortage, but we are being directed to use our man hours in, you know, so that they weren't working together for several weeks. That's just a huge problem when you're trying to manage properties of this size. So, you know, I'd be in favor of moving forward with the budget as it is and then coming up, working with the residents to come up with mid- and long-term solutions so that, you know, everybody's happy. Because I think that, quite frankly, I think we just spend, for the return that we get, we spend far much, too much time on this every year or every two years. So let's resolve it, short-term, midterm, long-term, and move on.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Jose, did you want to add anything to that?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmembers, anything else? Okay.
I'd just like to conclude by saying I'd also...
Mary Ann?
Yes. Is it my turn? Hello?
Yes, it's your turn.
Okay. Melanie actually covered a lot of the issues I was going to bring up about COVID and about the weed killer. But one thing that Christine was talking about was their want to basically pull out and do their own landscaping in their own areas. And I am curious, Jose, how, of course, we would get still, the city would still get paid for water. The city would still get paid for electricity and all, well, not the city, but all the rest of it. But wouldn't that take, first of all, all of the members of cottages to actually do a vote or a poll or something? I mean, wouldn't that be the first step is to make sure that the whole, everybody in the cottages wants this and then move from there? I'm not, I'm not sure about the legalities, but I agree. This probably isn't the most modern way of handling kind of a district.
So Mayor, if I may?
Please.
So Councilmember, great question. And I know we're doing analysis on that. That was something that the council directed us to do. We're going to be coming back with the idea of going to the finance committee first to present kind of the findings. But yes, usually there is some type of at least majority, not majority landowners, majority potentially of the majority of money assessed out there. So it's kind of weighed depending on how much the assessments are. But there is, there is most likely a process where you're right. There has to be some type of agreement by the majority of folks. But that's what we're looking at. We're also looking at situations, and I think that it was brought up today, potentially kind of more of the hybrid approach where potentially a company does it or they do it. It gets a little complicated because there are also our right-of-ways out there in question with the landscaping. So those are all kind of the issues we're trying to work with here. But we are looking into that. That is something the council was interested in.
Thank you. Thank you, Jose. And, you know, I agree. I think this needs to be a standing item on the finance subcommittee so that we can discuss this and help these folks get out of the lighting and landscape district if they so choose to do so. I see Vice Mayor Turner is raising his hand. So Jason, please share with us.
I had a question about, so if we're having a dialogue that we already are engaged in a process to see what can be done to make changes by the community to either pull out or hybridize the services with the LNL, what would be the impacts of us not putting an assessment increase this year? Just because if we're already looking towards changing the game anyway, what's the cause and effect that I'm not aware of as I think of this? You know what I mean? Help me with what ripple effect an idea like that could have because I don't want to do something detrimental. But if we're already leaning towards changing the concept as in real time as possible, do we still see the same benefits of putting it through as it is? So I'm very welcome to feedback and input on that.
You know, Councilmember Turner, I personally don't have an answer for you. I would just expect that they'd be operating at a deficit and they'd build much more the following year. But I'm going to leave that to Jose or Paul to answer.
And Mayor, if I could just kind of jump in, just in my experience with different jurisdictions and all, of course, David and Paul could add more clarity. But the reality is like a budget has been created by your professionals, by the engineers. Now, I know there are questions regarding the budget, but there seems to not be enough time to kind of go back, crunch the numbers, look at what budget is regarding the providing a hybrid or other solutions or dissolving. That's kind of a future. That's a next year type of issue. The budget we're talking about is to pay for the services that are this year. So we could be talking about potentially changing the way things are done for 2021, but you're still dealing with a budget that's going to cover you till the next process. And I think that that's kind of what your staff is presenting before you is the budget they're coming up with. I know there's questions about it, but I think that they're related, but it's kind of a different issues as far as moving away from the current system to the actual budget we have for this year.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
And Mayor, your finance director has her hand up.
Suzie?
Yeah, I also want to add that if we don't increase the assessment and then we continue to spend at the rate that's in the budget, there will be a general fund contribution.
Thank you, Suzie. Councilmembers, anyone else? Well, the first item on the agenda is a resolution number for Zone 1. And I believe I'm going to recuse myself from that item. So Councilmember Turner can take over that meeting. And I'm just going to remove myself from the dais.
Mayor, before you go, let me just make a comment. This is a public hearing tonight. If council would like to and desires to continue to deliberate and look at more detail, we can bring, we can continue the public hearing and bring it back. We do have one more meeting scheduled for this month. There is that option. And we could focus in and zone in on Zone 3. The other option that would, I think, there's a tremendous commitment for both by yourself as the mayor, but also remember Bagby is, you've indicated this to continue this discussion through the Finance, Admin and Police Subcommittee. And I think that's a venue where it really can facilitate additional dialogue and discussion about how there might be cost savings, how there might be some opportunities to change to the management and operation within the particular zone, have an interactive conversation with our park and maintenance lead, Hector Galvin, who can, also, we can engage the residents within the zone for the conversations. Because I can certainly share that I've heard from other residents that they'd like to see increased maintenance activities and other activities undertaken within the zone, which again, have budgetary impacts. So, you know, may facilitate additional dialogue that could change the perspective on the budget. So there are kind of two options. I just wanted to share with you, Mayor, and councilmembers, you know, if you really want us to dive in this budget, we can do that and bring it back at your next meeting. Alternatively, engage in that conversation, engage with the community and particularly the neighbors and have a discussion around how we can really look at the management for the zone.
Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a question for either Paul or Mark. How much are they paying per month in Zone 3 again?
It's an annual fee.
An annual fee. Sorry, what's the annual fee?
$496.
$196.
How much, Paul? Dave?
$496.78.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, just my personal preference.
I didn't hear the answer. You muted, David.
The proposed annual assessment for Zone 3 is $496.78. And if you divide that by 12, that gives you kind of a, that gives you the monthly cost.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we're talking about, do I have this, is my math right? $42 a month, $41.33 a month? Okay. Okay. So that sort of puts it in perspective for me. I would not recommend that we hold this item over. I prefer to move forward away so we can take that to a vote, Mr. Mayor. I plan to recommend the item as is.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz, did you have anything to add?
Yes, I also feel that we need to move this item. I feel that if the participants of this program really want to have some changes, they need to bring an alternative. And we would need to really reconsider this for a serious change if we're going to disband LNL. I mean, $40 a month?
$20.
Practically very economical. I'm sure that once the assessment is done from other companies, there would be a much higher expense. But I do believe that we already heard what the community has to say. We know where they stand. We know the objections. Perhaps now it's time to move this item and to engage in a serious conversation about pulling out of it.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I follow up with that? I'm sorry, it wasn't quite done.
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted that clarification just to kind of put it in perspective, the amount of time that we're spending on this. And, you know, I want the folks in the cottages to understand that we do hear them and we hear their concerns, you know. But as far as this year is concerned, it's not just that we went to organic pesticides as opposed to, you know, banning glyphosate, which is a response to the community. In addition to that, you know, the grounds crew was banned... In addition to that, you know, the grounds crew was banned from working together for two months of lost work. And I think we need to put this into context of the weather as well, which was a very unusual spring. Not only, you know, did you have to spray multiple times when you're using, you know, the non-toxic herbicides, we're using a more natural herbicide. We had a series of warming trends and then cooling trends and rain. We would warm up and then when rain again. And that happened, you know, that happened two or three times within the last six weeks or so, which is just, you know, that's weed city. Everybody, every gardener knows that. So, you know, I'm just looking for a little bit of flexibility and consideration from the folks in the cottages just to know that we hear their concerns. We have been very hampered by both the limitations of the products that we're using, which is a result of being responsive to the community and the weather conditions this past month, this past, you know, month and a half, and not being able to do the kind of work that we normally do. So I would just ask them to consider that in, you know, that this has been a very unusual circumstance, a very unusual year. We need to move forward with this item. And then let's also look in the future about how we can, you know, better meet their needs.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. You know, I'm going to recommend, you are the Chair of the Finance, Police Subcommittee, that this be a standing item on our agenda. I'd also like to have the city clerk, once you send her Ms. Black's letter or email, I mean, would you please share that with the full city council? So we make sure we receive that. You know, I have to agree with Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Cruz delaying it. I don't know what we can accomplish in two weeks. I don't know that we're going to have a satisfactory answer, that we're going to drop the cost to the point where it's going to be a dramatic savings. I think what we need to do is move ahead with what's on the plate this evening. Invite you folks to please come to the finance meeting. We will give it appropriate time. We'll walk you through the process of what you have to do. In the meantime, hopefully, we can have an answer on whether we can contract some of these services out of the lighting and landscape district. That's my recommendation. With that being said, and I'm not seeing any other hands, I'm going to recuse myself because the first item, the resolution, I believe it's on page 65, has to do with my zone, which is Zone 1. And it's actually...
I have it on page 61, Mr. Mayor.
61.
I was just going to remind you to mute your mic before you leave the stage.
Thank you.
All right, looks like for the next few moments, it is the Jason Show. So welcome, everybody. Any other questions or comments on Zone 1 that we would like to address at this time?
Mr. Vice Mayor, as I indicated earlier, I would like to move the item.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Irene, would you be so kind as to offer us a roll call vote, please?
Oh, I think we need to read the resolution first, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Would someone please offer it by title?
I'd be honored to offer it by title only, a resolution approving the annual engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2021 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zone 1 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Thank you, Melanie. And I believe Mary Ann seconded, or was that Marta?
It was Councilmember Cruz.
Thank you, Irene. May we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
And Mayor Walters recused.
Thank you, Irene.
Jason, are you Zone 2?
I am. I will need to mute my mic and turn off my video. And Mayor Walter will go ahead and take over when he's available.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. I think the problem is my mic on my computer and this mic here is picking up my voice. Irene's looking at me like I'm completely wrong. So, okay, next we have a resolution approving the lighting and landscape district for Zone 2. Would somebody like to offer that by title only?
I'll offer it by title only.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Bagby.
Okay, a resolution approving the annual engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2020, 21 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zone 2 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Can we have a roll call, Irene?
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner is recused. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
And Mayor Turner. I'm sorry, Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Thank you.
Jason, I guess you can come back now to the dais. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is a resolution approving the lighting and landscape district, Zones 3, 4, 5, and 6, and 7 for fiscal year 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Could we have a roll call?
Vice Mayor Turner?
Don't you have to read it first?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Melanie?
I'll recommend the item by title only. It's a resolution approving the annual engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2021 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zones 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Thank you.
And Irene, would you please? I think for the approval, Vice Mayor Turner has to sign with Zone 1, if I'm not mistaken, as I recuse myself.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, next item on the, and Dan, John, I hope you come to the finance subcommittee meeting, please. We'll make sure you get the notification. Do you know the date of hand? First Tuesday of every month. New business. The item is presentation from the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, SCTA, on GO Sonoma Transportation Sales Tax Measure. Is anyone here for that item, David?
Mayor, yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is to hear a presentation by the Sonoma County Transportation Authority. Suzanne Smith, the Executive Director, is going to provide an overview of GO Sonoma, Better Transportation for all of Sonoma County. The item tonight is a presentation on Measure M, which is a quarter cent transportation sales tax that expires in 2025. SCTA desires to put this on the ballot for renewal. And what the Executive Director for SCTA would like to present to you is an overview on the expenditure plan in accordance with the Public Utility Code so that they can move forward with placing this item on the November ballot, ultimately for consideration by the voters of Sonoma County. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Suzanne Smith. Suzanne is going to walk us through a presentation on GO Sonoma.
Suzanne, before you get started, this is an increase in the term as opposed to an increase in the amount. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I really appreciate the opportunity to present information on the Sonoma County Transportation Authority's proposal to place a transportation sales tax measure extension before voters in November 2020. I do want to start by acknowledging that there are far more pressing societal issues facing all of us as we sit here tonight than what I'm about to present on. But however, part of the civil society and our work in local government is providing a continuum of services that support our human, built, and natural environments, helping them survive and thrive. We're in an extraordinary time, but we will move forward. And the stability and importance of a well-planned and reliable transportation system will always need to be part of what we do. So with that, I'd like to just tell you a little bit about what I want to cover. I'm going to walk through a brief history of our current measure, Measure M, explain the GO Sonoma proposal and its benefits to the city of Cloverdale, and then talk about the process to advance the measure and why we should do so now. Today, we are seeking support from the city council to proceed with this effort. I think most of you know the SCTA is the countywide agency that manages a quarter cent sales tax known as Measure M, dedicated to funding critical transportation infrastructure projects and transit operations. The measure is set to expire in 2024, but the need for dedicated local transportation funding is ongoing. To start, I'm going to cover a few of our accomplishments, how we've leveraged state and federal funds and the transparency with which we carry out our work with our partners in each of the cities and the county. Since 2004, when 2/3 of Sonoma County voters supported Measure M, we've been successfully providing funds directly to each city and the county and delivering regionally significant infrastructure projects. Being a self-help county, meaning we bring our own money to the table, has been a key part of getting infrastructure built. It gives us the ability to get projects ready to go, to compete effectively for outside funds, and to control funds that can only be spent here locally on transportation priorities. This leads to local jobs and helps to provide a stable source of revenue to keep transportation programs and projects moving. In addition to working with local jurisdictions, we also have a citizens advisory committee that oversees project funding, Measure M audits, annual reporting, and the development of our multi-year strategic plan. The SCTA team has a proven track record of delivering regional projects like Highway 101 and several interchanges and intersections linking to the state system. Having a reliable source, the SCTA, having a reliable revenue source, the SCTA has leveraged highly competitive state and federal funds at a ratio of 5 to 1 to widen Highway 101. Other projects have seen similar matching, local matching opportunities, including projects in Cloverdale like the overlay of North Cloverdale Boulevard, pothole and repair, pothole repaired maintenance throughout the city, and design of a pedestrian safety project. None of this would have been possible without a local commitment that gets projects shovel-ready and matches construction funding. The transportation sector is a key component of job creation and economic support. A thriving and healthy economy relies on a multimodal system for the movement of people and goods, plus building infrastructure projects and running transit creates jobs, local jobs, that have a ripple effect throughout the county. Since Measure M has a 20-year life and is set to expire in 2024, the SCTA Board of Directors started discussions more than two years ago about if and when we should ask voters to support extending the funding. The process started with discussions in 2017, but for a variety of reasons, the 2018 election cycle became not very appealing. It was not a presidential year. There were competing transportation measures on the ballot. There was uncertainty about whether or not we would receive full funding for Highway 101. And so the board opted to defer until the general election in 2020. That timing actually aligned really well with our uptake to the Conference of Transportation Plan, which is the SCTA's guiding policy document that showcases project priorities across all modes. It's developed with all of our partner jurisdictions and through a robust stakeholder engagement. Prior to developing the GO Sonoma Expenditure Plan, we received project priorities from each of the cities and our bus operators. We also use the pavement management system, the data from that system to develop information on what our road maintenance needs will be over the next 20 years. After that, we use some of our existing structure to conduct stakeholder outreach. But we also use community group meetings and polling to assess how people feel about transportation. With that information in hand, we developed the GO Sonoma Expenditure Plan via the SCTA Board and extensive discussions with stakeholder groups and individual members of the public. The discussion focused on how best to address all modes effectively and retain support from a majority voters, a super majority of voters. Now that the expenditure plan is finalized and approved by the SCTA Board, state law requires a majority of the cities representing a majority of the population plus the county board of supervisors to support moving forward. And that's what brings me here this evening. Before moving into the content of the measure, I just wanted to share with you the results of our outreach effort. We surveyed 616 people through community meetings, focus groups, and online. And those residents gave us their top three issues of concern for the transportation system. And that is it takes too much time to travel around the county. Our system of transportation is harming the environment in terms of GHG emissions, and our system needs better maintenance. In addition to that non-statistical feedback, we conducted a statistically valid poll of 600 people in October of 2019. There was very solid 73% support for a quarter cent 20-year tax extension. Obviously, we are in a very different time now. But countywide polling conducted in early May on a different matter also tested our ballot question. It came in with 76% support, which is well over the 2/3 support required for success. However, given all of the uncertainty we're facing about our health and the economy, the SCTA Board will conduct another poll in early July before making the final decision as to whether or not to proceed. We took the outreach and polling data and developed our vision and goals and aligned them to prioritize the investment of GO Sonoma funding. The SCTA vision is connecting people, places, and goods as we transition our transportation network to zero emissions by 2050. Our guiding principles are to improve safety, equity, and quality of life. And the goals are that our transportation system should be connected and reliable, safe and well-maintained, community-oriented, and place-based, and zero emission. Following all of this groundwork, the SCTA developed the ballot question and the expenditure plan. The ballot question will read, "Without raising taxes, shall the Sonoma County Transportation Authority implement the GO Sonoma Act to repair potholes, reduce congestion, make biking and walking safer, expand local bus service, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, improve evacuation routes, and enhance transportation services for students and seniors by continuing for 20 years the current quarter cent sales tax dedicated to transportation, providing approximately $26 million annually?" The expenditure plan that we then developed is based on four program categories, two of which are formula-driven, move and maintain roads and increase bus service, and two of which are competitive, move traffic and improve safety, and build bikeways and pathways. I will run through those four program categories and talk about how Cloverdale will benefit from GO Sonoma. Smooth and maintained roads is the category that mirrors most closely one of our very successful programs in Measure M, and that is direct funding to each jurisdiction for pothole repair and local road maintenance. Under the GO Sonoma Act, we will double the amount of money available for local roads. And the city of Cloverdale can expect over nearly $160,000 a year in reliable annual funding for road maintenance. The Move Traffic and Improve Safety Program is competitive, and it's a program that commits 27% of the measure funds to infrastructure projects that are roadway-based but also address bike and pedestrian and transit needs. They will be competitive based on, based on a variety of criteria, including air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, connectivity, cost effectiveness, local support, safety and public health, and traffic flow. Once we score projects through a competitive process, they will also be assessed based on how they can reduce GHG emissions, how quickly they can be built, and their ability to create jobs, and how they address geographic equity. All projects will require environmental review, engineering, and matching funds before construction can commence. can, can begin, and at least 5% of the funds in this program category must go to non-auto-related elements of a project. Each jurisdiction has provided the FCTA with priority projects that serve as examples of the types of projects that will be funded from the Move Traffic and Improve Safety category. The list for Cloverdale includes a couple of projects, the Cloverdale Downtown Complete Streets Improvement Project, and the Cloverdale Neighborhood Streets Reconstruction and Maintenance Program. Funding in the Go Sonoma Act for local transit improvements will go to expanding and enhancing local bus operations to provide a more reliable service that works for more people. Go Sonoma more than doubles the local funding commitment to bus service with 23% of the measure guaranteed for bus transit. Go Sonoma will find, will fund a community benefit program to provide fare-free rides for groups like students and seniors, and this formula-based program is dedicated to our three bus operators, Sonoma County Transit, Santa Rosa City Bus, and Petaluma Transit, with Sonoma County Transit receiving about 52% of that, and as your operator, that's where you would see some increased benefit. The last program is Build Bikeways and Pathways. This is a competitive program that is focused on better separating bikes from cars and making it easier to bike and walk for people of all ages and abilities. It includes building new infrastructure for bicycles and pedestrians that will increase overall safety, closing critical gaps in existing routes, and promoting the use of active transportation through community benefit programs like Safe Routes to School and Vision Zero. Go Sonoma triples the commitment of local funds to bike and pedestrian projects with 12% of the sales tax revenue dedicated annually to this program. And again, Cloverdale's priority projects were provided to us by the city, and they include the list you see in front of you, but Citrus Fair Drive, Greenway Project, Cloverdale River Trail, Cloverdale Gateway Projects, and several others. I mentioned that the FCTA has been planning for a November 2020 ballot measure for several years now. Here's why. The biggest reason is that we have a lot of work to do, and our current sales tax is nearly spent out with the funds committed to projects. By extending the local tax now, we can, we can get new projects of all types ready to go. This will not only provide benefits to people traveling in Sonoma County, but it will provide jobs to help with the economic recovery. But there are a lot of other good reasons to proceed with the measure in 2020 as well. FCTA has a proven track record, as do our partners, and we need to continue the work that allows people to move efficiently and safely throughout the county. Having continuity of funding matters when it takes years to build projects and plan for transit. We need to keep our self-help county status. It enables us to compete for state federal funds, and we don't want to lose that leveraging opportunity. We need to support all modes, and having more local funds available to do things like help our bus system recover from the impact of the pandemic, grow, grow their service, or explore new opportunities to get people out of their cars, reduce GHG emissions, and curtail vehicle miles traveled. These local funds are imperative as we strive to reduce GHG emissions from the transportation sector. In addition, there are not likely to be as many ballot measures on in 2020 as we would have anticipated pre-pandemic. Two regional measures related to housing and transportation have been postponed. Several statewide initiatives have been shelved, and while there are some jurisdictions that are considering citywide general tax measures, there are no other countywide special taxes planned at this time. If we wait, the ballots in 2022 and 2024 are likely to be very crowded. And finally, we need a two-thirds majority to pass, and high voter turnout is critical. Sorry, I keep getting booted out of my computer. So we need a two-thirds majority to pass, and so that high voter turnout in, in 2020 will be critical. So what's next? Here is a schedule. I will be presenting to all of the nine city councils over the next two weeks. We are, well, if we get the support from the cities, including Cloverdale this evening, we will conduct a poll in early July. After assessing the poll results at their meeting on July 13, the FCTA Board will make the final determination about going to the ballot, and then the FCTA will ask the Board of Supervisors to place the measure on the ballot. With that, that concludes my presentation. I appreciate your time this evening and would be happy to take questions.
Suzanne, thank you for that presentation. I'm going to open it up to council members to see if there's any questions at this time. Councilmember Cruz, please.
Yes, I would like to know, how would you, how did you choose the projects for Cloverdale?
We did a call for projects, and city staff responded to that call with, we did a call for projects for our long-range plan, and then the, the city staff provided that from all of the jurisdictions, and we asked that they prioritize what projects they might like to see through the sales tax measure. I will say, though, that this is a competitive, they will be competitive program, so you aren't locked into those projects. They are meant to serve as examples.
Okay, thank you. So it means that it could, it could change, it, some could be added, some could be deleted.
Correct, and we're talking about a 20-year measure, so we understand that there needs to be some flexibility built in.
Okay, thank you very much, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagby.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for asking that question, Councilmember Cruz, because I think that's one of the real misconceptions in the public, and probably amongst a lot of other council members who don't happen to serve on this board, is that the projects or come from the grassroots, they come from each bus in each of the cities. And so, yeah, the, that project list is a reflection of our community's values and how we want to use those resources. So, yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I did have a question for, for Suzanne. It's alluded to in the staff report, Suzanne. One of the things that we have to consider as a council, if this is going to move forward, is that if this does not pass, we are going to be on the hook for the cost of putting it on the ballot. Can you talk with us a little bit about that and, you know, talk about what our share of that would be should we move forward and the measure does fail?
Sure. Um, so there's unfortunately not a great answer to the question, or at least not a very precise answer. Because we don't know what the cost of the election will be, we've asked the Elections Department to provide us sort of a ballpark, and they gave us a range, and so we've been operating under the theory that the election cost will be about $700,000. The formula by which we typically divide up funds is a population road mile formula, and so the city of Cloverdale is about just over 1.5% of the, the cost associated with that. My, my sort of approach to this question has been, first, FCTA will contribute its own funds, probably to the tune of 100,000 to 200,000, and then the remaining amount would be divided up based on the formula, and I can't do that math in my head, but I know Cattati was somewhere around 8,000. And the other thing is that I would anticipate working with the Elections Department to try and spread our costs over two years, and that may, may not be an issue for each jurisdiction, but it will be an issue for FCTA as we try to pay for, for, you know, a share of it.
And so, yeah, kind of doing some very, being fast and loose, loose with the math, that probably puts us at about nine or 10 grand. Give or take, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner, did you have your hand up?
I did, thank you. And Melanie, you might be able to weigh in on this one, too, just because you're on the, kind of both boards respectively for this, but to me, it seemed like when SMART wanted to do something similar, the results that they had from their polling showed some disenchantment in, in the service, and, and I don't want to speak to the validity of not, it just, that's how it seemed to me. With the, the polling that you've demonstrated for, for Sonoma County and the systems in there, it seemed much more favorable, and i- is there, is there a level of comment that you could provide on, on what you think is, is differing in that regard for having the level of support that you're seeing? And are, are your real expectations right now that that support has carried through some of the economic challenges that people are facing? Because I like the concept of being able to continue to fund this program and in, ensure that it could, it could move forward, and I realize 2024 is only four years away, but I still find myself asking probably the same question you guys are lassoling with, is now the time, with, you know, with a potential share of cost for our city alone of 10,000 if your cost reaches a million, which, whether you think that or not, I, I don't know, but that's just kind of where my head's at. So again, to kind of summarize my rambling question, do you, do you foresee that the positive polling, the real results for this year, do you foresee those staying positive? And what, what are you doing to kind of differentiate yourself from some of the disenchantment of public transportation that, that SMART might have seen?
Well, I certainly have my opinion, but I think Suzanne can answer that pretty well. I'll, I can follow up after we give her her chance.
Sure, I can start. Um, you know, I think SMART had a tough row to hoe, and not because, not a reflection on the service they provide or anything necessarily, but we have the luxury of doing a lot of types of projects in a lot of jurisdictions, whereas SMART is a single project that serves a certain number of people, and I think that was, that provides a different kind of challenge when going back to voters. So I think the, the benefit of our measure is that people, well, our track record of delivering projects like Highway 101 and the demonstration of how we brought, sort of fought above our weight and brought in more money than, than perhaps would be our share based on formulas, and how we, in order to do that, we had to have this local money. I think that case has been made, and people have seen the results with Highway 101. But in addition to that, it's the smaller projects within the community that we can point to and say, we, we accomplished those things because we had this local source. And this new measure will be even more like that because the previous, the, the current measure that we have, 40% of the money is, was dedicated to Highway 101. That's done. So 40% of the money can be spent on local projects, you know, more within your cities or within the county. 5% of the money was dedicated to SMART, because we were kind of a transit, we provided sort of transition money for SMART before they were able to secure their own sales tax. We're not committing that money to SMART, the transit money is dedicated just to our local bus service, which feeds into the SMART system as well. But I do think there's a really good case to be made that this is a truly local opportunity that gives us, you know, really a good leg up when, when we're competing for state and federal funds, and we can deliver a lot more local projects.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I would just add, you know, having, I'm, I'm also sitting on the, the Measure M Ad Hoc Committee, and, you know, there's just, there's no getting around this, Jason, and I, I mean, it's a completely fair question, i- is that, you know, we, we also, we have political operatives, experienced people in the room, experienced, you know, council members, and they're kind of like, you know, it's really, you know, you'd have to have a mega crystal ball to really know what the, I think the voters are going to say, in what mood they're going to be in November. So this is really, this is really a hard call as to whether or not to move forward, but I'll, I'll kind of stick with what I said in the ad hoc, like one of our first ad hoc meetings, I just said, you know, when are we going to not have roads? You know, not in my lifetime, not in your lifetime, in, you know, and roads are really about, you know, it's not just about cars, and it's, it's, it's about buses, it's about bicyclists, it's about the community putting forth really quality projects, and I think we're, we're really doing that. I mean, one of the things Cloverdale does really well is, and we have this in common with SCTAs, that we are really able to leverage dollars really well and kind of, you know, box above our, our weight, and that is, is like every time we have a project, we're trying to like link it with, you know, well, what else do we need to do? What else can we get done? Um, and, yeah, so having that, having that dedicated source of, of, you know, income is, it's very important for us. I mean, look at the conditions of our local roads. It's like, can you imagine if we, we lose that? Our neighborhood streets are in bad shape, you know, and on the same, you know, by the same token, you know, right now, we've got a project at South Cloverdale Boulevard, and it's the big signs up that say, "Brought to you by Measure M," you know, thank you very much. So, I mean, to me, it's, it's, you know, it's really a tough call, I'm really, you know, counting on all of you to, you know, put your heads together and, you know, give us an honest answer as to whether or not you think that, that this, you can support this, and this thing is going to fly in November. I almost feel like we, we don't have a choice, because, again, you know, roads aren't going away, buses aren't going away, this is something that we need, and it's not just a matter of maintaining what we have, it's also, this is a really important economic development tool for us when we, as we're going to be trying to dig out of the recession needs. These road projects are really important for our economy, so, but at the same time, if, you know, if, if one of you says, you know, I'm just, I can't support a tax measure right now, I certainly can't blame you. So that's, I don't know if that attitude helped answer your question a little bit, but that's.
No, it did, it genuinely did, and it only gave me one follow-up question, and, and because you have the, the knowledge of being on the board, I, I again will address this to the both of you, but Suzanne, you brought up a really interesting comment that you're going to have certain high-level expenses that were part of your kind of fixed costs in the previous go, go-round of, of this particular measure that you won't have this time. I, I saw in our allocation that Cloverdale could expect an annual revenue source, if you want to call it that, of approximately 152,000. I, I'm getting some information that I find to be reliable, that the cost per mile to pave is significantly higher than $1 million, you know, and so am I trying to, to convince the public that, don't worry, in, in 13 years, we'll have a, a significant revenue for a mile's worth of road? So, so I'm not trying to be funny. What I am trying to ask is, will we, as a jurisdiction, then be able to petition for some of that percentage and, and, and money that you talked about that won't have to be allocated elsewhere, to have some of those big-ticket items have more of an opportunity to become a reality over the next maybe less than 13 years? You know, maybe we get into the five-to-10-year realm, and just kind of what your thoughts are on that.
So I will defer to your engineer about the cost per mile, but it, it depends on the treatment, it depends on the condition of the road, and a full-depth reconstruction, and a lot of factors. But I will say, kind of the short answer to your question is yes. The Move Traffic and Improve Safety category, that competitive program, is where Cloverdale will be able to say, hey, we have a $3 million project, we want to do, I don't know, a paving program, or we want to do, you know, something on the Boulevard, and here's, you know, here's our application, and, and I, I mentioned the phrase geographic equity, and I think Councilmember Bagby, Director Bagby from my world, but would, could, could tell you that, you know, we do make every effort to ensure that our, every jurisdiction gets a project throughout all of our programming processes, so whether you're the county of Sonoma, or the city of Cattati, or the city of Santa Rosa, there, you know, if, if you have a project that's a priority, we, we try to help make that happen. So that wasn't a very short answer, but the short answer is yes, you will have an opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Suzanne.
And Councilmember Staff, thank you for affording me the time for these questions. That concludes mine.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
Yeah, I have a question that maybe directed it, maybe David. Is the, I didn't see on that list the walkway for the First Street Bridge, and I think one of the reasons that people are going to be a little sour about this kind of a measure is that the walkway on First Street Bridge, we've been waiting for 20 years for that, the first letter I wrote about that was almost 20 years ago, and we keep getting promised it, and promised it, and promised it, but we keep getting overlooked. So I think you are going to run into some trouble getting two-thirds on any kind of, from this section, from the northern section of Sonoma County. But I'm curious as to why that isn't on that list.
Is that the Crocker Street Bridge? Is that what we're?
Yeah.
So, so that project is fully funded.
And that's what I thought, and so we've been kind of waiting for that for quite a long time, and then meetings were called, and then canceled, and then meetings were called again, and canceled. So again, we're just sort of waiting, and I'm waiting for the money to get gobbled up somewhere else.
Well, I, I will defer to your staff on the details, but I do know the county of Sonoma has received full funding for that project, and Sonoma has received full funding for that project and we, we track their, we track, uh, their funding deadlines and if they're running up against losing funding. And I've not seen anything about that, uh, but I don't honestly know the status of the project itself and I'd be happy to follow back up with you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Suzanne. I, I just have a couple of quick questions. Um, are we the first city you presented this to?
No, uh, I had three presentations yesterday, actually, one was on consent, but, um, I've been to the town of Sonoma where, uh, we received a, a positive vote, uh, three to two. Um, the county board of supervisors was 5-0, uh, city of Rona Park was 4-1, and city of Cattati was 5-0. So you're my fifth presentation.
Also, um, when Measure M first came to the ballot, the cities weren't asked to share the cost of the ballot initiative, were we?
Uh, no, because we won. So if we win, then we pay for it.
Okay. Um, yeah, but was that the deal? If you didn't win the first go around, we'd help pay for that? Do you remember?
Man, you are, you're taxing my memory on that. I should remember, but I, uh, I don't recall that discussion.
One more easy one, and this is kind of a silly question, but I'm going to ask it anyhow. So let's assume that the, that the measure passes and it's good for another 20 years. And, and the estimate is the city of Cloverdale is going to get in the vicinity of 150,000. Can we bond against that for the 20-year period and get that money upfront to do a bigger project?
Yeah, it's a good question. And that has come up in the past conceptually, but then, um, there's not been a lot of, uh, desire to follow through. I think it's something we're definitely willing to look at. Uh, the SHTA does have experience issuing bonds. Uh, we, we did so for, uh, the Highway 101 program and we did so on behalf of SMART for their, uh, 5% of the measure. Um, and if that is something that, uh, you know, you can do a paving program that's going to last for the 20-year life or 15-year life and we can, um, sell that, I think, you know, I think that's something we're willing to consider.
Thank you. Council members, uh, before I open it up to the public, any other questions? Okay, with that being said, Irene, do we have anyone in the public that would like to talk about this item?
Ray Tan by Councilmember Bagby.
Oh, Melanie, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, let everybody know, first of all, the Crocker Bridge, it's outside of the city limits, that's a, a county project. And, um, I understand that it's also fully funded and they're just in the process of, um, uh, it probably delayed because of COVID or, you know, something else, or, you know, some other crisis or emergency, but I know that they're going to be meeting with us soon to go over the design and, and finalize the details. So that, that project is happening.
Crocker Bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I heard about, that's what I heard about a year ago, um, that it was fully funded. Um, and I have been, there were meetings called and those were canceled. That was probably about six months ago.
Yeah. Between power outages, fires, floods and, uh.
Oh, I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying that if indeed for some reason that money is grabbed, maybe this would be an opportunity for us to get it back.
It's already moving forward.
So if I could, I just got, uh, a little text from, uh, some of my staff that, uh, the engineering funding has been obligated and meaning they're underway with the, um, the preliminary engineering and that the construction funding is programmed for 2022. So it would go to construction in two years.
Thank you.
I haven't even seen any drawings.
And you'll.
Yeah, I think they're just doing that.
And you'll check on the possibility of bonding, uh, against that for us, please? Right?
Yeah, no, I, I think that is something we would be open to.
Okay, thank you. Um, Irene, is there anyone in the, um, waiting room to comment on this item?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
Um, anyone in the seat pack that would like to, um, ask a question about this item? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to the dais and, and we, we need a motion or not of approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and support this, uh, this bill.
I second.
Okay. Do you suggest a roll call on this, David?
Mayor, roll call vote would be good.
Irene, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby? Councilmember Brigham?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Yes. Suzanne, thank you for that presentation. And, uh, let's keep our fingers crossed. We're caught on our way to some signs.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can I just, uh, thank the council for your support? This is, Suzanne's doing an amazing job for us. This is a result of, um, as you can imagine, it was hard work before the pandemic and, um, it's a very difficult time for anybody who is trying to read the tea leaves and tell the future. So, um, thank you for, for giving it careful consideration and giving it your support.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is adoption of the, uh, city of Cloverdale budget for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. And David, is, is that your short item?
Yes. Mayor, council members, the item before you is the operational budget for fiscal year 2021. By way of background, staff brought forward a draft budget for your review and discussion at the May 27th council meeting. Uh, at that, at that meeting, staff did provide an overview of the major budget themes involved, uh, reviewed the, uh, departmental work plan and provided a presentation that outlined the work plan as well as a summary and overview of the fund balance for the major funds. At that time, uh, staff did recommend that council provide, uh, input and feedback on the draft budget and requested your feedback prior to bringing it back, uh, today for your iteration. Uh, during that time, there were some minor revisions to the budget. We did, for instance, add, uh.
An expense relative to replacement of the mower for our parks and recreation staff, which increased the general fund expenditures by about $30,000. Uh, there was also some minor revisions relative to, uh, gas tax that was provided, based on data provided by, um, Michael Coleman. At, at the May 27th council meeting, uh, the council members did provide, uh, some preliminary feedback on the draft budget. Uh, most specifically, uh, Councilmember Bagby was asking about expenditures relative to the response for COVID-19. Uh, in addition, Vice Mayor Turner, uh, inquired about, uh, some of the expenses for, for public, for public works. Uh, our, our response, I think, to those, the, the two, uh, inquiries about the budget was that expenses for related to COVID-19 are really, uh, embedded in the operational expenses, particularly, uh, for the various, you know, items for PPE, uh, sanitizer, et cetera. And there is, there's not a specific, uh, you know, budget line item that just calls out for COVID expenses, but we are, uh, tracking those and Susie certainly can speak to, uh, those, those expenses and, and where we've been coding them. With that said, the, we, since the, uh, budget was published, we, we did receive some additional requests, uh, for, for funding. Um, most specifically, we, we received a request, uh, from the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce. There is funding in the budget, uh, identified, uh, it for, uh, funding the annual program that we, uh, engage in with the chamber for promoting the city of Cloverdale as well as for visitor and chamber services. Uh, the budgeted amount is, uh, $65,000. Uh, that's an increase of $2,500 from last fiscal year. Uh, and, um, you know, it's just a, 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 a gen, a reflection of a general, uh, cost increase. The other change or the, excuse me, the other recommendation or budget request we received was from the Cloverdale Senior Center. We included, uh, $12,000, uh, in the budget. Uh, there was a, a, a change or revision from last year. Uh, last year's budget included 10,000 for the senior center and 10,000, uh, for health action. Uh, given the, the decline in activities this year, primarily related to COVID, there was some, uh, a, a change in combining it to, to a total of 12,000. We did receive correspondence today from Ms., Ms. Enos, uh, who, uh, you know, oversees and helps senior center manage health action, uh, to increase that, that request to 15,000 or increase of $3,000 for a total of 15,000. Uh, with that said, uh, the, the budget, you know, does rely heavily, uh, on, on reserves this year. Uh, we, we, we did end the previous fiscal year with a, a significant, uh, uh, fund balance. Uh, however, we're, we're estimating the use of about $900,000 in reserve funds, which, uh, you know, will significantly impact the, the, obviously the, the reserve accounts. Um, one thing I did want to, uh, point out is that the, the council has made a number of, uh, uh, important decisions to set aside reserve funds and that's helped us maintain that 25% reserve balance. While the budget currently reflects about a 31% reserve balance, a majority of those funds are in those, uh, those committed funding accounts. So while, while you, it looks like you've got about 2 million, 2.7 million in reserves and you do, and that's, that's, it's a, it's a good position to be in. The, uh, funds are generally committed to those reserve accounts, uh, based on kind of preliminary analysis by the finance director. Uh, there's not a lot of discretion in terms of, uh, uncommitted funds. I think we've estimated, Susie, and you probably have the exact number at your fingertips, uh, approximately $400,000 in uncommitted fund balance that isn't sitting in one of your reserve accounts. So just want to make sure you're aware of that, uh, because it gives us, unfortunately, it gives, um, us very little wiggle room as we move into the next fiscal year to make budget adjustments. And we know that there will be, uh, as there are every year, unexpected expenses that will, will require staff to bring forward, uh, budget amendments. And obviously we will want to stick within the, the council's, um, reserve policy. Uh, with that said, senior staff, I've asked all senior staff to, uh, really, uh, understand their respective budgets very well and, uh, we're, we're here to answer any specific questions or comments that, uh, council may have about, you know, individual funds or individual activities or projects within the budget and certainly call upon staff, uh, to answer any, you know, very specific questions about the budget. Uh, Mayor, uh, council members, that really concludes and over because of the budget. Happy to entertain any, any questions or comments you have.
Uh, thank you, David. Uh, council members, I'm going to open it up to you to ask some questions. I see one hand raised and that's, uh, Councilmember Turner. So Jason, please. Unmute yourself.
Thank you, that is absolutely necessary. Uh, this question, Mark Green, tell me about this lawnmower.
Uh, yeah, the lawnmower, Jay.
You know what, before we go any further, can we just make sure everybody at the theater has muted themselves? We were getting an echo there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Turner, the lawnmower on the budget is a replacement mower that was acquired decades ago. It was, it's long passes its life. If we don't replace the mower, we're going to have to replace the motor this coming fiscal year. It just makes more sense to acquire the new equipment rather than get into a major mechanical repair.
Thank you, Mark. One more question. Um, if, if I'm led to believe this, and, and I might be way off here, for, for the mowing of the parks, especially the ones that have kind of the bigger lawns, are, are we still contracting a portion of that out? And would you believe that this new mower might add some efficiency that might, uh, decrease the need for that?
The, the, the only contract mowing is for vintage meadows and this mower would not be used at that park per se unless we cancel the contract. Uh, the mower itself is going to be much more efficient because currently, the current mower, being decades old, does not operate when it gets too hot. And in Cloverdale, that happens frequently. So often, uh, the, the mower has to be parked and let it cool, cool down for an hour or two before we reengage in mowing. So that's the problem with the current equipment is it's not very efficient. You have to start a job, stop, let the mower cool off and go do something else and come back and continue.
I appreciate that explanation, Mark. Thank you.
Council members, any other questions? Well, I'm going to just ask David to, uh, just chat for a quick minute on, um, on what the process is. If we approve this budget tonight, are we going to be looking at it on a quarterly basis, uh, for adjustments, uh, to just kind of do a barometer check, uh, as we go through the year? We still don't know if we're going to get reimbursed, uh, for the COVID-19. If we do, that puts a completely different complexion on this financial statement. So will we have opportunities to go in throughout the year and make adjustments on a structured basis?
I'd like to, uh, respond to, uh, Mayor Walter's question, just to reframe, uh, the mayor's question was, you know, what frequency would the budget be reviewed and would, would there, will there be opportunities to make adjustments, um, throughout the fiscal year? And, um, staff's recommendation, or at least my recommendation on that is to have the budget be a standing item on the finance and admin, finance, admin and police subcommittee. Uh, obviously that subcommittee does meet monthly. Uh, that's an opportunity for staff to, uh, present and provide any, any updates, uh, that, that, uh, may materially affect the budget, particularly, uh, as, as you mentioned, Mayor, on, on, on the revenue side. Uh, staff has, you know, done our best to, uh, forecast, you know, the impacts of the COVID-19 emergency. Uh, we, we hope we, we, uh, that are, are, um, we took, you know, we took a conservative approach and we, we hope our numbers hold and, and ultimately we hope we, as a city, perform better. Um, but, you know, often there's a lag in the reporting, uh, that can be anywhere from three to six months, depending on what the revenue source. If it's, uh, TOT, it's, you know, it's usually, it's quarterly. If it's sales tax, we often don't have the data until about six months after the quarter's closed. Um, and then with respect to the current emergency, we, uh, fully anticipate and, and will put significant effort towards, uh, receiving reimbursement from, uh, FEMA for some of the emergency expenses, uh, but also to obtain funding through the CARES Act and or any other legislation that comes forward, particularly for CDBG funding. Um, and that would be, uh, something that we'd want to bring to the finance, admin and police subcommittee, uh, and identify, one, how that revenue should be brought, you know, with the recommendation of how to bring that revenue into the budget. We, we certainly don't expect it's going to be, uh, just to necessarily all support that filling general fund expenses, uh, that there'll be some ties and requirements to that, uh, but that there'll be an opportunity for a conversation, discussion on, on how the subcommittee ultimately wants to recommend, take a recommend, indicate, recommendation to council on how to adjust those, those, uh, those revenues and likewise maybe some expenses relative to those funds. So I see it really, um, as an ongoing process. Um, you know, this, this is really, uh, you look at the budget as, as a, as a, um, evolving document that, uh, reflects the council's goals and aspirations for the next fiscal year. Uh, but as we know more, we'll continue to bring that data back and refine that and refine the estimates on the, uh, on the revenue side, but also on the expenditure side.
Councilmember Cruz, I believe you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I am, um, concerned about some items on the budget that I wouldn't like to, to approve the budget with those until we have some responses on transparency from a couple of organizations. And, um, so I would like to know how do I, how do I address that? How do we address that?
Why, why, why don't you share with us what your questions are pertaining to the item?
I particularly, uh, concerned. I'm particularly concerned about the Cloverdale Boys and Girls Club because they announced a grant for Cloverdale, and they have withdrawn that offer. And I have wanted to get a response in writing, and they just say, give me a call. So I don't, I would like to know what has happened to the grant that was offered to Cloverdale, and I would like to know how the money is being spent. I definitely have concerns about that. I have tried four or five times, and I'm not the only one in what used to be a board for Boys and Girls Club in Cloverdale, and that does not exist anymore either. So I really would like to have some answers before we approve any money for Boys and Girls.
Councilmember Cruz, I think that dollar amount is 10,000, David?
Correct.
That's correct. The current fiscal year budget for fiscal year 1920, as well as proposed budget for fiscal year 2021, has a line item under the Community Support Fund. That's Fund 104, identifying that we have $10,000 budgeted towards the Boys and Girls Club. And one answer for Councilmember Cruz is if council wants to approve the budget tonight with that line item in there, you could do so and you could give us direction to bring that report on, you know, how they utilize their funds and decide whether council supports continuing to fund the Boys and Girls. Alternatively, you could remove that line item from the budget or recommend its removal, and it's subject to future discussion. We could, in assuming council supports funding, bring that back as a budget adjustment in the future.
Thank you.
And you know, I make comments.
Councilmember Cruz, what I recommend, and I know we've done this in the past, is to approve it as submitted with the caveat that it's not to be dispersed until we have a satisfactory report. We get reports from the chamber. We get reports from just about everybody that we give money to. And I have to concur that if you're not getting responses to your questions, I agree, they shouldn't be getting money to be spent elsewhere in the county. So how we do it, I guess, is entirely up to city council members. My preference would be approve it, put a holder on it. Like Dave said, the money's not released until we get a satisfactory report.
Yes, that sounds, you know, I say this with a heavy heart because I worked very hard in the last couple of years raising funds for the Boys and Girls Club. And all of us participated in many of the events, and all of us were there when they announced the $50 a kid summer program. So I mean, I don't know what happened, and how come we haven't been able to receive a proper and clear answer?
Councilmember Turner?
Yes. Martha, when we did this $10,000 last year for the Boys and Girls Club.
It was a match.
If I'm remembering correctly, specifically, it was to allow at least 10 children to participate in their summer program, which they let us know was $1,000 per summer program per child. And we jumped at the opportunity to fund that for 10 children in Cloverdale. The dialogue that I'm hearing right now is let's find out, you know, what that money was spent on, and I'm OK with that. But I'd like to voice a concern that if it was not contributed to at least letting 10 kids come do a summer program, I'm going to be a little bit concerned that the money was not utilized in a way in which we instructed. And that's just concerning to me. And so I just don't know where we're at with that. But I think the mayor's recommendation for ensuring that we hold on to the release of funds until we can have some assurances, I find to be a favorable pathway forward. Thank you.
Well, Jason, I think that money was used appropriately. My question is, if they offer $50 a kid this year, and now they're announcing $1,500 a kid, you know, it's, there is a discrepancy there. So we need to find out what happened to the monies that were allocated to Cloverdale, and we need to find out what is the status of the Cloverdale finances. Because we did a lot of local fundraising, and we did one at the place where your wife works also last year. And that was, that was in addition to what we had already done. So I have many questions. Mr. Mayor, I have one more concern, and that is about the Chamber of Commerce. I would like to know where, if this money goes towards promoting all of the businesses in Cloverdale, or is it only promotion of members of the chamber that get promotion? Because if any of these $65,000 go to promotion of businesses, and it is taxpayers' money, it needs to be promoting all businesses, regardless of affiliation. So that's a question I have for the chamber that I would like some clarification on. And then I have a question here. It says here to approve $12,000 to the senior center. Are we going with the 12,000 or with the 15,000 they have applied for?
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Let's get some answers to those questions. I know we have always made it clear to the chamber that when we give them taxpayer dollars, they can't distinguish between members and non-members for those programs. But before I open it for public comment, let's talk about the senior center. David, please.
Happy to. And let me say again, just in terms of the chamber, annually, we prepare, well, I shouldn't say we prepare. The chamber provides a scope of work that is placed in an agreement that comes back to council for approval. And I know that the agreement does cover broadly the city of Cloverdale, and it doesn't focus on the membership. But I know that the question, I think, from Councilmember Cruz is a little more nuanced than that. With respect to the senior center, the request that we received this afternoon from Ms. Rebecca Enos was to increase, we have identified the budget from 12,000 to 15,000. And that's really a council decision on what funding level you would like to provide to the senior center for next fiscal year.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any other questions before I open it up to the public? OK, Irene, do we have anyone in the waiting room that would like to comment? Oh, I must have missed her. Councilmember Bagby, please.
Oh, sorry, I'm not sure if, my reading of Rebecca's email was not consistent with what David said. So I wonder if we could go back and look at that. I thought that she was asking for a separate 10 or 15 for health action and other programs. That's what, did I misread it?
My read of the request was $7,500 each for the senior center and for the, for health, for health action, for a total of 15.
Oh, OK. So it's a discrepancy of, am I doing this right? 3,000?
Correct.
Let me call on Susie. She's had her hand up for a little bit here. Susie?
I just wanted to state regarding the Cloverdale Boys and Girls Club. So the contributions that we make are for the summer program, and the summer program has not started yet. Normally, we would make our contributions in mid to late June. So there have been no funds this fiscal year sent to the Boys and Girls Club.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, I would like to know if perhaps the senior center could receive more money than health action because the senior center has greater needs than health action itself.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Well, I was going to say this to our deliberations, but just since we're bringing it up. What I was going to suggest is I'm happy to take Rebecca's request into consideration, but I didn't want to make any changes to this evening. But I thought if we take this to the Finance Subcommittee, I just had some questions about health action, the functions going forward. You know, we had talked about possibly utilizing their, one of the community programs. So I just thought, you know, I would be OK with moving forward as is, but then possibly looking at an increase and just finding out, you know, what are we going to be able to do in this next fiscal year? So that's how I was, I thought, I said, let's, I'm happy to go ahead and consider it, but I think we can do it at Subcommittee level and dig a little deeper and get some questions answered and find out, you know, what, find out what our goals are.
I'd like to offer my support to that concept.
Councilmember Brigham?
Yeah, I tend to agree with the comment about, that Marta made about, you know, I don't understand really why we don't just give the senior center the money and let the senior center make up their mind whether they want to fund health action. The senior center really stepped up to the plate this last year with food distribution and other things. And I don't know, I just think that the senior center should not, I don't think health action should be funded as much as the senior center. But in a way, the senior center does seem to want the Health Action Group there and wants to move in that direction. But shouldn't that be their decision? Shouldn't that be what they decide?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I kind of like to investigate a little bit more.
The budget, reflecting page 21 of 159 of the draft budget, it does identify $12,000 for the senior center. And I think along the lines of Councilmember Brigham's comment was, would be to provide the funding to the senior center. So that, you know, it was an increase from last year from 10 to 12. Obviously, the senior center would then have the flexibility to support funding health action through the funding that's provided directly to the senior center. But again, we can do as the council pleases, and we can divide that out, show separate line items if that's, if there's more comfort level there, or again, change the funding amount to reflect the council's desire.
Well, I for one would like to see the money go to the senior center. I mean, they're adults, let them make that decision.
Yeah, I don't think I can agree with that because I think that we need to ask and answer more questions about the role of health action in the whole community. I'm just not satisfied I have enough information for that.
Well, I guess in my opinion, it's like the health action should be like a separate group. It's not, if they want money, they should come and ask for it separately.
Well, Kevin, can you kind of clarify, you know, since you're serving on that, in that group?
I do think they're separate. I think the reason they're kind of put together is the fact that Rebecca used to work at the senior center, and they use the senior center facility. But I would agree that they don't necessarily have to do it that way, and they could, they could be separate. I don't see any real reason why the two requests are the same other than the fact that, you know, Rebecca used to run the senior center, and then she also ran health action. So yeah, I think they could be separated.
Yeah, I'd prefer not to funnel money through an organization to go to another organization.
Yeah, I would kind of prefer it to be separate also. But I don't see, I think the senior center should be funded very well. In fact, I think they should get more money than what we're giving them just because of the way they have stepped up, especially with the food distribution and in many other ways. And I like what Rebecca's doing, don't get me wrong. She's moving on, she's taking a new job too, so she isn't going to be really involved in the health action anymore anyway, from what I understand. So if the senior center wants to pick up something, they're welcome to it. But I just don't like the idea of giving them only 7,500 bucks, the senior center. I think we should fund them at least in the same amount that we fund, say, the Boys and Girls Club.
I'm sorry about that, folks. I lost my laptop, so I had to go to the iPad. So I just got logged in. Are there any other questions from council members at this point? Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, you know, and don't take me wrong because I am part of health action too. But I think I agree with Melanie that we need to have more explanations of what the expenses are and so on. And perhaps they should apply for money on their own. We are going to continue to have presence of Rebecca, and there is somebody assigned for Cloverdale too, so it's not likely if it's disappearing. And Kevin and I have been working with the Health Action Council for a couple of years now. So the other thing that I wanted to mention was about the students. I don't know which line item that is. The student liaison used to get $1,000. But because we have two students this year, each is getting 500. So I am applying to Kiwanis to see perhaps they can up 500 so we could give 1,000 to each student. Because it worked very well. In that way, the representatives did not have as much obligation in terms of, they were able to alternate participation, and it didn't interfere with their high school life. So, and they still were able to be really engaged because they knew exactly when they were coming in, and they were able to thoroughly prepare. So I think we should, you know, something to be discussed, but I think we should continue to have two students and perhaps add another $500 to that. And if I can bring another $500 from Kiwanis, I think we will be OK.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz.
Yeah, that's just, yes.
I'm going to open this up to the public real quick, and then we'll bring it back because I know the chamber is here, and they'd like to say a few words. But Irene, is there anyone out there on the internet that would like to talk to us?
No hands are raised, mayor.
Then let me open it up to the public here at CPAC. Anyone wishing to address the council on this budgeted item, please do so.
So well. Councilmember Cruz, this is Nina with the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce. And we do provide services throughout the Cloverdale business community and actually, the community itself. The only, the only thing that we've limited to chamber members thus far are the videos that we've been producing during shelter in place. We've done 30 videos, and we wanted to start with chamber members, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to branch out to others. We're going to continue doing those videos because we think it's a great opportunity for Cloverdallians to know who their businesses are, to know who the people that own those businesses are. And thus far, we've gotten over 800 views per video, which is pretty good. They're only two and a half minutes long. per, per video, which is pretty good. They're only two and a half minutes long. But, and I've got a list of people that we're not, we haven't gotten to yet. Was there another specific situation that you're aware of that we're not being equitable?
No, I just, I just want to make that tax dollars are going to everybody.
No, no, that's, that's super important to us.
Yes, thank you.
Ron, would you like to speak?
I just wanted to address Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff. I mean, there's someplace, trying to, trying to get a distance here. I wanted to thank everyone for the continued support of the Chamber of Commerce. As we go into 2020, 2021, we are also looking at some of the same shortfalls that the city is relative to our income. We're looking at less, less events potentially or less income per event. We're also potentially looking at and have projected in our draft budget, less money for membership as a lot of the local merchants are struggling as well, just to keep their doors open, let alone be able to pay, pay their dues. For those reasons, we did submit a draft budget to the city. Our draft budget this year is, is bare bones to keep the doors open, pay insurance, keep the staff up and running and, and pay the rent and other things that we're all very well aware of. And we have requested $75,000 and the city's been generous to up our, to increase our reimbursement this year to 65,000. At 65,000 from the city and our projected, our projections on our draft budget, we'll be underwater about 20 to 25,000, I believe, for income versus expense. And we would like to, again, ask for the additional 10,000 to, to assist us in being able to get through the, that next fiscal year with the same services and actually a slight increase in services from, from the city. We have communicated with city staff. We understand the city's position. There is some potential that we could get that if there's additional income through COVID relief from the state or the feds. But we do want to make that, make that ask that, and all that information is between the draft budget, which I'm not sure if you have. And then Nina prepared our scope of work that we have done and we plan on doing again for 2020, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Councilmembers, let's bring it back. Any other questions about the budget? I know we have a lot and we brought up a few items here. How would you like to handle them? I'd like to bring up one. And it has to do with the, the building I'm sitting in with CPAC. How have they requested anything from us, David? An increase in maintenance fees or anything?
City staff that I'm aware of has not received any, any requests for a funding allocation from the Performing Arts Center. We do identify within the budget expense related to our annual lease agreement with, with Cloverdale Performing Arts Center, which we, we pay directly to, to the Performing Arts Center for the use of this facility.
Thank you.
Do you like me to address that at all, Beth?
That'd be great, Mary Ann. Thank you.
Okay, well, we just had a meeting on Monday, another one. And we have, because of the financial situation and the fact that we can't have any income generating performances or anything, we have laid off the whole staff. We no longer have any staff there at all, including cleaners, nothing. We can't, we brought the cost down, but there's always still the basic costs of it. We discussed going to the city and asking for something, for more, but we just decided that with the lack of money that, from the, from the city, for the city itself, that we weren't going to come and ask, we were just going to lay everybody off because we knew that probably till the end of the year, there is no way that we're going to be able to safely reopen. So we've gone almost totally online. I'm sure a lot of you guys have seen the poetry, the Dead Poets Society, the play readings, all of that is online now, but it doesn't make you any money. So it's just the generosity of a lot of the actors and that usually perform there, that they're actually doing stuff now through the Dead Poets Society or music or whatever. How long this is sustainable? I don't, you know, we're trying to do projections, but yeah, if you can't make any money, you can't keep your doors open. So, but if you guys want to have council meetings there until we reopen, there's going to be nobody there cleaning the bathrooms or the hallway or anything because we just had to lay everybody off. And now with AB5, I am really concerned about actually being able to stay alive at all. Because if AB5 isn't adjusted, there is no way that the Performing Arts Center is going to be able to stay financially intact and function. It's very simple. And it's going to have that same effect on many, many, many of the nonprofits.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Jason?
I, you know, I, at this point, I don't really have any questions. I just kind of have a, a position. So I'll just kind of hold off till everybody can get their questions out.
Okay. Councilmembers, any other questions of David on the budget or the chamber at this time? Okay, I'm seeing no hands raised. So Jason, why don't you go ahead and make your statement at this point?
So I'm going to, I'm going to come right out and say that I, as far as moving forward on approving this budget, I, I can't right now offer any increases. Chamber, I really apologize. The reason I can say that is with the initiative that we're going to keep this as a standing item on the Police Finance and Admin Subcommittee, it's really hard right now for me to make any sort of educated decision on any sort of increased funds when we're already being told that we're operating at about a $900,000 deficit issue that we have to pull from our reserves. Now, with that being said, who's to say that one quarter, two quarters from now, we don't see an increase in our, in our revenues or opportunities there by the, the continuing opening up of the state or, or people becoming more and more comfortable? Although it's kind of hard to have that prediction when you hear the unemployment figures that everybody's been, been kind of talking about and the projections there. So I find myself being very, very conservative after last year, trying my best to plan something and then being compelled to kind of move forward in an initiative that spent $100,000 on removing rubber mulch that I did not anticipate at all. And so I don't have enough assurances. I, I just see too much uncertainty to be able to offer the increases that are being requested right now. But I want to see, as, as was mentioned, that the topic continue to live on the Police Finance and Admin Subcommittee because there's nothing stopping us from doing a budget amendment later saying, here you go, chamber, here's another 10 grand. We found a spot where we could find it. But we just committed to Sonoma County that if their tax measure doesn't pass, we could be out 10 grand on that one. And we're, we're in a dialogue right now where we're already operating at such a significant loss. So allow me to, to summarize. I, I'm happy to see this budget move forward as written. I think staff did a great job. I just can't support the increases right now. Thank you.
Now, when you say you can't support the increases, Vice Mayor Turner, are you also referring to the senior center?
Right now, I have to say I cannot support extra to the senior center. I cannot support the extra $10,000 to the Chamber of Commerce, but I want to see the dialogues live and, and be able to have their vitality in the Police Finance and Admin Subcommittee where we can make informed decisions as revenue sources become more visible to us.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, any other comments? Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, no, I agree with Jason. That's my position, very conservative at this point. We're working with a skeleton crew all the way from top to bottom. And we're, we're going to have to make some adjustments to be able to stay with our reserves as recommended for, for this coming year. So as much as I would like to support increases, I'm very skeptical about it all. The only one that I am going to try to work for is bringing money for the students so that they can have the traditional $1,000 that they normally get. And if it doesn't work, then it doesn't work. But, but yes, we have to have our priorities in order.
Okay, so you're also saying no increase for the chamber and no increase for the senior center?
Yes, I'm pending money on the Boys and Girls.
Okay. Any, anything else, councilmembers, before I try, councilmember Bagby? And Mew?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think that we're, it sounds like we're in agreement. You know, we don't know what reimbursements may come. We don't know what new crisis may come. I think that the budget is good as is tonight. And I'm going to, you know, say what I said earlier, which is, you know, I'm going to recommend that we consider the increase to the senior center, that we, I support, you know, the revisiting the increase to the chamber. I think they know what kind of a situation is. But, you know, the situation has been brought to my attention that is of a great concern to me, and that is, is that building maintenance and cleaning. You know, we can't have city employees and councilmembers attending a meeting and, and members of the public attending a meeting where there are no sanitation and custodial services. So I would say that we need to find a way to make sure that the, you know, the, the building is disinfected before public meetings. I don't think that can be ignored.
Thank you, councilmember Bagby. Well, there's a motion or a resolution, but, but let me just weigh in, you know, I, I understand that we're in a shortfall situation right now. And, you know, it, it seems we're always in a shortfall situation. We always have to look at our money very closely. I'm in favor of accepting exactly what was presented to us this evening. And, and, and we will be adjusting it on a quarterly basis as we go along. And, and if we have to cut back, I'm sure the chamber would understand. I'm sure the senior center will understand that the money is just not there. But, you know, I, I, I am not in a position where I want to shut down the city or stop our partners from functioning because of a hiccup. And that may seem irresponsible, but I, I just know we're going to find that money somewhere. So that's my opinion. Okay, I can't see him. Jason, please.
My, my only respectful rebuke, Mr. Mayor, is I'm in a position where I would rather underpromise and overdeliver rather than overpromise and underdeliver. If we commit $75,000 to the chamber and they operate it into their budget, and then we cannot fulfill it, there will be a cause and effect that cannot be anticipated right now, in my opinion. Thank you.
There's a resolution if there's no more. Marta, please?
Yes, it's just that, you know, we are not hiring people that we need to have working in the city. And that is another way of seeing if we are putting a stop to functioning of the city. So we need to weigh, what is it that we really need right now? Do we need more money for employees? Do we need more money for the chamber? Do we need more money for health action? I think we should give the senior center because of the social service that they provide. We're going to have to become very creative in raising funds from now on. This is quite a hiccup, I would say.
I, I hear exactly what you're saying, councilmember Cruz. I look at it that the chamber is also providing a service. And that's what we do. We provide services to the community. Yes, we're shorthanded and we're always going to be shorthanded. That's just the way our city has to run. But I, I view that the chamber delivers services that our community expects. They deliver services to our businesses. The senior center delivers services to our aging community. They provide the meals for them. So they both provide services to the community. And that's, that's why I'm going to continue to support them in their requests. So I'm, I'm not, I don't see any other hands, but there is a resolution on page 133. If somebody would like to make that motion to.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the item.
David, how do you suggest we do that?
Mayor, councilmembers, if you'd like to proceed and adopt the budget tonight, it's recommended that the council entertain the, the motion that's included in your packet that would authorize approval of the budget and approve the expenditures and authorize the expenditures for, for next fiscal year. Obviously, staff has heard you unclear that you want to engage in an ongoing review of this living document. And we will commit to bring forward financial information as real time as we can to ensure that council's in a position to be able to review the document and make recommended adjustments as, as you proceed. But staff's recommendation tonight is that you adopt the resolution that would approve, approve the budget if it's included in your packet.
I vote, Mr. Mayor. Can I have a clarification?
Yes.
So we're going to vote on it and it does not include any increases?
I'm going to defer to David. I don't have the numbers right in front of me.
If council decides to proceed with the budget as it's presented, there would be no, no increases. But if, if council would like to make a specific change, it appears that I, that there may be, council may, may not be united in that decision. So you may want to take that up as an individual vote if you would like to make a decision specifically on either the funding for the senior center or for the chamber.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to offer the item as presented this evening.
Is there a second?
With the clarification that there's no increase, I, I would second.
Could we have a roll?
Councilmember Bagby?
Did Jason have a question?
I.
No, I think he was just playing with his screen.
Correct, sorry.
I'll vote I.
What do you have the chamber in, 65?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Walter? We've just got to unmute you.
And just for the record, the title of the resolution is the resolution of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale adopting the fiscal year 2020, 21, City of Cloverdale Operating Budget.
Thank you, Jose, for, for reading that. Yes, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of it because I do know that we will be talking about this on a quarterly basis. I, I think the dollar amount that, that we're giving the chamber is sufficient to get them through most of the year. And as we go along, we'll, we'll discuss this. So that being said, I think you have your direction staff.
Correct, Mayor. The council has weighed in by unanimous vote to approve the budget as it, as it was presented in the agenda packet and approved, approved of our resolution.
Okay. Councilmembers, I, I have to apologize for the echo. I, I really don't like being here in the Performing Arts Center when we have our meetings. I don't know whether to I don't know whether to mute or unmute, and it's really kind of challenging. But with that being said, we're going to go to subcommittee reports. And unless you have some dire information, let's try and move through them as quickly as we can. It's already 9:11. So with that being said, finance administration, please.
I believe we meet on the 7th. And I was going to just make a recommendation for a future agenda item for that subcommittee. I just wanted to first of all, I wanted to thank the chief for putting out his social media piece earlier today and then also, you know, his presentation. But I just would like to just go ahead and put on our future as a future agenda item, the Eight Can't Wait, because I know that other cities in Sonoma County are going to be reviewing those. I think you I I just want to go ahead and have put it on the agenda as well as the My Brother's Keeper petition, which I've also signed. And I just want to go ahead and put it on that agenda so that if anyone from Cloverdale, anyone from the public wants to come and ask questions or, you know, voice concerns, that that can be a forum to start a conversation. I I I don't want to shut down anybody's, you know, wanting to participate in that process. And also think it's a real opportunity for the community and for the police department to get information about, you know, what their priorities are out to the public. The other item I would like to request for that is, you know, just in conversations with folks in the community and actually across the state, I think one of the major misconceptions about, you know, police departments is that that everything is discretionary, when in fact, so much of the police budget is either mandated by state requirements or they're a result of postrequirements. And so what I'd like to I'm not exactly sure how to word this. Maybe Suzy could work something up. But I'd like to take a look at the or have a record of the police's the police department's budget that shows mandatory spending and then also discretionary spending, just so that we can show folks, you know, what percentage of that police budget every year is the result of state requirements. So I was hoping that we could just go ahead and put that on the the agenda for the next meeting. If if there is more research that needs to be done, we could certainly push it out. But I'd like to just go ahead and make it an item for our next subcommittee meeting so that we can talk about it as a community. And if there's any feedback about in the community about how they want to move forward with a dialogue regarding public safety, it would give them a chance to do that. And then, of course, we can bring our findings and our input back to the full council for consideration.
Okay, thank you. Planning, sustainability. Our next meeting is June the 16th. And Mary Ann, we'll we'll see you on Zoom. I'm sorry, Chief, did you raise your hand? No, okay. Next is Public Works.
We have a meeting coming up as well as the school city meeting on Monday.
Okay. And how about the Joint City Fire District?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Being as we hadn't met in a while, if it's okay, I'll offer just kind of a brief overview of what we discussed on Monday when we met. Councilmember Cruz was able to join us in Mary Ann's absence. She had a definite excused absence for something else she had to do. And the big things that we talked about were both the city and the the fire district's preparation and vegetation management for the upcoming fire season. Chief Jenkins made comments about controlled burns being done. He offered some level of comment on the fires that we're seeing right now this early in the season and how humidity plays a tremendous factor in the evenings and nighttime for controlling fires, which he elated or alluded could be why you don't necessarily see this early in the season, the fires carry over several days is they're able to make pretty notable progress overnight with humidity. We also talked about preparation for the Fourth of July. And the Fire Board was informed, if they had not known already, that the City of Cloverdale would allow the discharge of safe and sane fireworks this year and that there was a concept for a fireworks show, as it's commonly referred to. And they commented on their partnership with the school district for that fireworks show. And at this point in time, there will not be any mass gatherings associated with it. So they're kind of working a plan around that. We discussed the concept of being able to work together on any future ballot initiatives to make sure we're aligned and don't necessarily over inundate the voters with with tax measures and just kind of have a collaboration or relationship on that. And then we also talked about the frequency in which we wanted to continue these meetings. And we're going to step up to quarterly. And we also want to put together one more ad hoc meeting before sorry, not an ad hoc, but a special meeting between now and about August to get an update on fire preparation, fire season preparation, and to continue to promote transparency. I really invite anybody who has the opportunity to go listen in to that particular subcommittee meeting. Chief Jenkins offered some incredible information that can just kind of help maybe put minds at ease. But more to the point, could help guide questions on any specifics that that people may want to see happen in in the realm of of fire preparation. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Turner. City School District?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Jason, we also hosted the visit of of an alternative to vegetation control.
Oh, my goodness, that's right. Please, yeah, go on about that. That was awesome.
With the herds of goats and sheep. And he was gracious to explain to us the cost involved in this kind of project, the season, where they cost more, et cetera. And it is something that we would like to contemplate. And David is going to conduct some more research to find out what is the possibility of that happening in Cloverdale and the costs associated with it. Anything else, Jason?
No, I really think that covers it. And thank you for remembering that. I thought that was a really unique and cool concept. I'd never heard of that.
Yeah, well, I've seen it in South San Francisco, and it really works well. But then again, you need to have a whole production.
Yeah, and I had I had the opportunity to listen in on that meeting. And and I was surprised. He said the cost is about a dollar a day per animal, which I didn't think was too bad.
A dollar 25 for the herd of 300, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
A dollar 25 in a herd with a herd of 300 pieces.
Yeah.
And according to the time of the year.
Homeless Community Advisory Group. And we have not met in a while, and the date is still undetermined. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin.
That's correct. We with the with the no gathering situation, we'll we'll pick that up as soon as we are able to.
Okay. Sorry to wake you.
Not at all.
The the next item is council reports. Councilmembers, any reports? I know we've received Councilmember Cruz's today. Anything else from council members?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I did not do my homework. And I will get an update to everyone at my next at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I just have an announcement, Mr. Mayor, to remind that the portable showers are available every Tuesday for the unhoused community between 11:00 and 1:00.
Did they bring them back?
It's they have continued to come. The man clarified that they never stopped. So I stopped and talked with him. And yes, they're here every Tuesday from 11:00 to 1:00.
How are they handling the corporate 19 issue?
Well, I guess they have their measures. They're doing it, and they're complying with the requirements by the Health Department.
Marta, did he give you any kind of an idea how many people are showing up for that every week?
Between eight and 10.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Let's just wait a minute. Informational reports. Water outlook, David?
Mayor, council members, the informational reports includes a water supply outlook and drought monitor map that was shared by Councilmember Bagby. I think it reflects that we are moving into what is generally considered a severe drought period. I think this is good to continue to track because it may be important to consider whether the city wants to implement water conservation measures. We haven't been physically requested yet to implement conservation practices and move us into the, you know, the tiers that require us to implement conservation measures. But I think this is something we should continue to review and may want to have it as a standing item on the on the Public Works Subcommittee. In addition, as of today, we received information from Sonoma Water about their filing of a temporary urgency change petition. The temporary urgency change petition is to significantly reduce flows in the Russian River this summer and fall. This is related to what they were what the Sonoma Water refers to as FRO. FRO is forecasting reservoir operations. According to Sonoma Water, they've been able to keep a tremendous amount of water behind the dam at Lake Mendocino that would otherwise have had to release early that is kind of offsetting some of the impacts of the drought conditions. But I think it's important to recognize that as as the flows in the Russian River are reduced, it it can have an impact on our on our water wells. Obviously, continuing the water supply moving through the Russian River system is is helpful because it it continues to to support the the underflow, which ultimately could support our 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 water our water wells. But, you know, this is this is something that I've asked and reached out to Grant Davis, General Manager for the Water Agency, to provide an update to in presentation to the council at a future meeting to be determined on the TUCP program as well as FRO. Because I think it will be very informative, given the importance of our water supply to our community. And Mary, I saw a hand up by City Engineer Rick Coen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I I think we're beyond the stage of discussion. I think we need to move to a Stage One drought declaration. I propose to put together a resolution for next meeting to go ahead and make that happen because the projected flows in the Russian River at 50 CFS will definitely impact our operations and will reduce our 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 ability to produce water. So got staff working right now on coordinating irrigation schedules for the larger irrigators, meaning the school district and our parks. And I think we're there where we need to pull the trigger, at least on Stage One, and to start looking at Stage Two as a possibility in July.
Thank you, Mark. No, no problem. Bring it back. Um, can we just back?
Mr. Mayor, I guess.
Yes.
I could just add one thing. The only reason that we haven't already declared this is is thank goodness for all of the hard work of Sonoma Water, getting the the Army Corps on board with using smart 21st century modeling tools so that we can hold back that water. Otherwise, we would be in far worse shape than we are. So we really owe them a great deal of of credit. And thanks for taking the lead on that. And just to remind everyone, it's really it's the it's the first program of its kind that is using weather forecasting and and modern data mapping. And it's, you know, changing procedures that have been in place since the 50s at Lake Mendocino. So, yeah, we owe we owe them a lot of thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Turner?
Hey, Mark, real quick. I had a comment made to me one time that was accusatory of, you know, government limiting residential water use and making everything be hyper efficient when really the gross users are in the commercial or industrial realm. Can you comment on an allegation such as that in Cloverdale? How much, off the top of your head, would you say residential water usage accounts for versus any of our industrial or commercial partners?
Oh, by far, it's residential use because there's a lot of landscaping around town. You look around any of these more newer developments, and you'll see a lot of lawns, et cetera, et cetera. So the vast majority of our water usage is for irrigation. It's not for industrial use. The only large industrial user we have is, of course, the brewery. And 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 they, you know, they they package it and and sell it. So that's but it doesn't compare to residential usage.
I'm not giving up my beer, Jason.
I don't blame you. So my my last little clarifying question would be, Mark, in your opinion, limiting water usage in the residential realm will effectively move the needle?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, council members. Next item is legislative reports. Authorization authorized letter of support for SB 1312 requiring electrical corporations to notify the Public Utilities Commission, Office of Emergency Services, and Department of Forestry and Fire Protection of a potential public power public safety power shut-off. P S P S.
Mayor, council members, I want to acknowledge Councilmember Bagby's role on Sonoma Clean Power. She brought this legislation to staff's attention. Staff quickly coordinated with the Executive Director of Sonoma Clean Power to draft a letter of support that mirrors the letter that was prepared by Sonoma Clean Power and was placed on the agenda just to ensure that council supports submit all the letter signed by by the mayor to our Senator Senator McQuire for SB 1312, which is really to ensure that our some of our local organizations that are important to responding to P S P S are notified of those potential actions by P G N E.
Thank you. And the next item is a letter to California Senators and Assembly Members requesting help with the proposed distribution of CARES Act funds to local cities.
Mayor, this this letter was time sensitive. At staff's discretion, we we asked for the mayor's signature. Normally, we try to bring those for council support. The the legislation was moving very quickly. The intent was to ensure an equitable distribution of CARES Act funds that were distributed to the state and garner, you know, at least a minimum distribution and or capita, well, per capita distribution with a minimum distribution to small cities under 300,000 population like the City of Cloverdale. And so that 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 letter was signed by the mayor and forwarded to to our to the to California Senators and Assembly Members.
Thank you. Status of current emergency?
No, I'm sorry, Mayor, to to interrupt just on the and and this is for the city manager for the the letter of support for SB 1312. You were looking for authorization from the council, correct?
That's correct.
Does anyone have a? Does anyone have a problem with executing that letter, SB 1312?
I do not, Mayor.
All right.
I do not, Mayor.
Then we'll go ahead and put the stamp on the envelope.
Perfect. See, no see no issues. So unanimously, the council has directed. has, uh, directed the, uh, the city manager to go ahead and submit the letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking the lead on that, um, June 3rd letter. Um, and that, and it's really an example. So thanks, Mr. Mayor, um, for serving on the mayor's and council members' calls. It's a real example of how, um, effective and important it is for us to work with the other mayors, um, in Sonoma County. This is a, a vital, um, this is how we are going to get our money. So, it's a very important issue. Thanks for staying on top of it and, um, and, uh, getting that request in.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is a, a brief update on the, um, directions related to COVID-19.
Mayor and council members, I just want to provide a, a brief update. Obviously, you, you've seen that we've, there's been tremendous progress made in reopening, uh, as of last Friday. Uh, the health officer did issue an updated health order, which, uh, provided for a, a, a number of new, uh, opening, uh, business types in Sonoma County, which included, uh, faith-based services, uh, indoor retail, uh, shopping and dining, as well as hair salons and barber shops, which, uh, now everybody's looking much better now that they've got a haircut. Uh, and last but not least, outdoor recreation business activities and equipment rentals. So that, that started, um, last Friday with, or that was issued last Friday with, uh, those businesses starting, opening on Saturday. And they've certainly seen a lot of activity, particularly with our, our, um, salons and barber shops here in, in, uh, in Cloverdale. Um, in addition, the health officer in Sonoma County have announced, uh, based on guidance provided by the governor, that we can start to move towards, uh, stage three, uh, given our, um, compliance with the measures in the attestation. Uh, and so what that means is, is we, uh, currently, that, that was provided for by the governor, uh, to start on June 12th. Our health officer has, uh, provided, uh, or indicated, you know, a little bit of a wait and see and would like to implement the governor's direction, um, on June 22nd. The, moving into stage three, uh, under the variance would allow for opening of additional facilities, which would include, uh, and important for Cloverdale is, um, is hotels, uh, campgrounds, uh, museums and zoos, uh, fitness facilities, uh, music, film and television production, uh, full opening of restaurant bars and wineries, and last but not least, family entertainment. And I do want to note that, uh, that the state has issued, uh, health guidance, the California Department of Public Health has issued guidance. Uh, staff has been coordinating with the chamber to ensure that they, they have that information available. Uh, and I know that, uh, their executive director Nina Hinch has been working diligently to get that, provide that guidance, uh, out to our respective business community. So a, a, a lot of, um, a lot of change. Uh, in fact, uh, today there was notice that, uh, beginning June 12th, the county of Sonoma is gonna, gonna allow tasting rooms for wineries and breweries to operate without food. It was, uh, originally, uh, wineries could open and brews, uh, but they had to have food and that led to a lot of confusion. Uh, but on June 12th, that's gonna, they're gonna be allowed to proceed. The health officer indicated that there was, that was a relatively low-risk activity. Um, with that said, uh, you know, staff is continuing, uh, to operate under the shelter in place and continues to work remotely. Uh, we are currently finalizing, uh, protocols for, um, opening of city hall and we are looking at doing it in a phased approach. Um, the county has, it, has, um, indicated that they are going to start, uh, opening a phased approach starting July 7th. And I think we'd like to kind of follow the county in terms of starting to, uh, open up a city hall, uh, a, again, on a phased basis. Our initial, uh, goal is to, uh, fall suit and, uh, open from nine to noon on Tuesdays and Thursdays, uh, starting that first, uh, the, the, the first week following the Fourth of July holiday. Uh, and again, our intent is to get to, our staff has been working to get all the protocols in place. Uh, and, uh, you know, making sure we have proper sanitation practices, make sure we, uh, comply with the requirements to, you know, take temperatures and meet all of the health requirements. And so we're, uh, we're moving in that, in that direction.
Thank you, David.
Mayor, I saw a hand up by Vice Mayor Turner.
Sure. One second, Jason. You know, you mentioned, and I'm going to piggyback, um, on what you said about the chamber. And, uh, Nina's still with us and I want to give her a big shout out, um, because she has taken a lot of phone calls and, uh, did a lot of legwork, uh, with businesses, members and non-members about what the, uh, current situation is with protocol related to them opening their business. And Nina, thank you for doing that. Uh, that was above and beyond your, your, your pay grade. Councilmember Turner?
Yeah, you know, thank you, Gus. And, and I, not, not realizing Nina was still there, I'd, I'd like to also offer my appreciation. I worked with Nina early on, having, uh, two times a week conversations and the effort that she put out was, was beyond compare. And, and not to go back on an issue, but my, my, my comments on budget had nothing to do with performance, Nina. I hope I can truly make that clear. It's just I didn't want to overpromise if I couldn't. And, and anyway, I'll leave that at that. David, my, 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 my question is, uh, talking about opening up city hall Tuesdays and Thursdays, I think you said nine to noon. What is it, and, and, and this just could be my ignorance talking, what is it we hope to accomplish with that? Is that to let people come pay a bill in person, to just bring back the collaborative effort of accomplishing city tasks? Uh, help me understand what that looks like a little bit.
A- absolutely, Vice Mayor, and great, great question. Um, it, you know, obviously, as we start to see local government open, uh, and they do it in a phased approach, you know, I think it's appropriate that we, we start looking at, you know, kind of, kind of following that, that leadership. But, but most importantly, we really want to serve our community. And we, we know there are folks that like to pay, for example, uh, pay, pay their water bills or their utility bills in cash. Uh, this would provide, you know, some opportunity for them to do that. Uh, likewise, we do have a number, uh, you know, this time of year, a lot of building permit activity. Uh, there, uh, right now, a lot of those transactions are occurring, you know, literally on the steps of, of city hall. And it just provides for a little bit more efficiency in terms of being able to, uh, issue the permits, uh, you know, cash receipt and give the, and then be able to provide, uh, you, you know, all the necessary exchange of documentation for the, for the permit process. Uh, obviously, we want to do it very cautiously, very carefully. Make sure, uh, that, you know, we are not unduly impacting either members of the public or our staff. And so that we're gonna, you know, we really want to pay close attention to, uh, the protocols that are implemented, uh, which, you know, you know, we've been actively working on, including, you know, placing the, the, the divider at the, at the space and, and, you know, ensuring that, you know, there's, uh, because of the physical distancing requirements, you know, having those protocols in place to ensure that those are met in terms of entry, uh, into, into, into city hall. Uh, and, uh, we've also acquired, you know, a sanitation device, uh, through public works to help us ensure that we're cleaning, uh, city hall facilities. And, and we, we also recognize that this is, this is probably going to be a long-term, uh, matter that we're going to be, uh, you know, trying to manage our way through. Uh, it, it's an opportunity for us to start at least integrating staff a little bit, uh, and, you know, how are we going to work together? Where are face masks, physically distance? And so, uh, you know, I want to be clear, my, the, the, uh, the direction to city staff wasn't everybody come back to city hall. We're still, uh, gonna continue, the majority of folks are going to continue to work remotely. Uh, we're gonna try to do it again in a way that we're providing some level of public service, but, uh, we're, we're not going to be, uh, open, you know, 40 hours a week, by any means.
Thank you. That concludes my question.
Yes, go ahead, Marta.
Yes, uh, I, I didn't know that Nina was still there. And I want to say thank you for all that you have been doing lately and it's been quality work. Uh, I have put it on my page, as you could see every time you come with a new video. We really appreciate that. Uh, we just want to make sure, as Jason said, that we don't make any promises we cannot keep. And, uh, I will be more than happy to assist in any kind of, uh, productions that require Spanish, even though you're quite good at it, Nina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Nina would like to say a few words.
This is a labor of love and with the initial $65,000 that was in the grant, it's still an increase over what we got last year. We're gonna make that money count. And if we, and when we come up with projects that make sense and we need additional funding, we'll deal with that. But I just wanted to thank you for your support, one and all. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Nina. Um, city manager, city attorney, what's?
Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll be quick. I, I just want to, um, acknowledge the, the work of our park maintenance lead, uh, the last two weeks, uh, directly overseeing the, the rubber mold project, uh, made significant progress in, uh, getting out the rubber mold shows at, uh, city park on Tuesday. Uh, and, uh, was watching finalized, uh, removal there. Uh, but, uh, you know, I think, you know, he's, Hector's really taking the lead on coordinating the contractors. Um, when we get that done, I'd like to, uh, do a press release to acknowledge, you know, our local, our, our local partners and the, and the hard work of our staff, uh, both, um, Hector and Kevin and Mark, and, and, you know, coordinating the activities to get that, that project done. Um, and, and, uh, was, want to also, uh, acknowledge the, the work of our, uh, engineering team in, in moving forward with the, you know, the, um, Safe House and School Sidewalk project. We all see that, uh, that project underway and, uh, that, that will be, uh, you know, continues. And that's a, this is another great project that, uh, you know, we're excited about seeing it finished.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Um, Jose, and thoughts from your end?
Mr. Mayor?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
To add to what David was saying, um, the, the public works crew have, has been taking care of the open space creek situation. And they already put a fence to protect the creek and, and the, uh, area where the kids were jumping with bikes.
Thank you. Yes, that was in your, um, that was in your report that you submitted, um, for the meeting this evening. Um, Jose, is there anything on your end?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. You, you know, I just want to make another little statement of apology. Um, it, on, on May the 31st of this year, I attended the, uh, Black Lives Matter, um, uh, little protest that we had in the plaza. Uh, Councilmember Cruz was there. Uh, unfortunately, I picked up a sign that said, uh, all lives matter. And, um, I, I have to apologize. I, I realize now that it was a Black Lives Matter and I, I didn't intend to diminish that any by having a all lives matter. So again, I'm going to make an apology to, um, our Afro-American community and our community in general. With that being said, let's move on to council directions for future agenda items. Anything, council members? Okay, I, I have one that I'd like to see about either kicking down to a subcommittee or, um, bringing it back for a discussion. And, and it's, it's the Zoom protocol. You know, I've been on some meetings where, uh, participants, uh, eat while, while they're trying to, to talk. Uh, one fella, um, um, you know, didn't mute his sound. He gets up and you can hear him go to the bathroom and flush the toilet. Uh, you know, we're fortunate that we don't have that. Um, but I, I'd like to see us come up with some type of standard. Um, I, I think texting and email is totally inappropriate when you're sitting on the dais. Um, so I, I just want to get a barometer check. How do you feel about setting up some type of standards? Um, you, you know, if you have to yawn, if you have to get something to eat, put on your still picture. You know, uh, shut off the, uh, the video. We don't need to see that. Any support for that or is that going to be a big waste of time? I mean, let's face it, we still are a professional organization, you know, and the, the public is watching us.
Gus, if I may, um,
I'd like to see us do that.
Being, uh, somebody who sits on many conference calls as well, uh, what you are speaking about is a, a common, common, uh, point of, of laughter and, 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 and issue. Uh, to, to give you an example, on meetings where you call in, we have a infamous problem of someone putting us on hold. So then the whole conference call gets to hear the hold music. And, uh, di- despite many, many efforts to try and create a reasonable level of etiquette, uh, human behavior still comes in. So I, I don't discourage your premise. What I'd like to see us maybe focus on is the, uh, what I can only refer to as the handbook. And now that electronic meetings may be something that's more of a, uh, occurrence, uh, adding a, a section within there as opposed to a separate standing document.
Thank you. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I have to say, I, I agree. Um, and plus, you know, if you, if you really screw up, you know, we're gonna call you out on it. So, maybe, you know, you think, think twice before you just walk away from your computer and, um, not putting yourself on mute. So, I, 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 I mean, I, I kind of like to think that if you really, uh, don't have good etiquette, you're fair game after that. Um, but I think it's, I, I think, uh, Vice Mayor brings up a good point. We're in, uh, desperate need of updating the, um, the, the, the manual or the, that, the council guide. Yeah, it's long overdue and I, it's something that I was trying to get done last year when I was mayor and, um, it just didn't happen. We just didn't have the time or the resources and things came up. So I'd much rather see us incorporate that and probably update our, our social media guidelines. And also, you know, a, a lot, what I'm seeing is a lot of cities are putting out like a, um, a creed or a code of conduct. Uh, and that can include how we behave on, um, meetings because I don't think these meetings are going away. And, uh, you know, whether we're in person or whether we're on Zoom, we're representing our communities. So, uh, I think it should be part of that larger effort.
Well, I, I, I agree. And I know one of the problems I have right now, I'm looking at my screen and I see, uh, Jason, I see Melanie, I see Chief Ferguson, I see Jose, and I see Suzie. I can't see anybody else raising their hand, you know, but we have a little hand motion thing that if you clicked on that, it would pop up. Like right now, Marta, uh, put on hers. So I, I know she wants to say something. Um, so, you, you know, we just have to have some type of protocol. How do we do that? Councilmember Cruz?
Please take yourself off mute, Marta.
Hand. I moved the hand, but not the microphone. Uh, I had my last three well seminars, five hours, looking at two screens, you know? It was incredible. Um, and so I have one screen that I look at and I have another one where I go for my document because, uh, I cannot manage the same thing on one computer like Jose or Melanie do, okay? So you'll see me looking another way, uh, it's, I'm looking at, at the other screen. Yeah, you have one, I have two. So, and, and so we came up with a, a list of things we were supposed to do or not do. And if somebody really messed up, you were called on it, you know? That's, uh, how it went.
Well, I, I think we as council members, uh, don't really, uh, even need to do that. We just need to be a little conscious about what we're doing. And, uh, I apologize if I'm not calling on everyone, but you gotta use the little hand waiver. Um, so. If there's nothing else for the good of the order?
Hopefully it makes you feel better. Susan Goran does the same thing. She can't figure out how to use Zoom on her iPad. So maybe, you know, the answer is just doing a little bit of training because you can change the number of panes that you can see on your screen at one time. So, um, yeah, I think maybe just, you know, we, this was 1.0 and, you know, because we had an emergency and maybe we just need to go to 2.0. Uh, and with a little bit of training and we'll, we'll, we'll get our act together.
Even with the agenda up on the screen like it is now?
Yeah, yeah, you can. You can manage it on one screen. So, yeah, maybe we, uh, So, yeah, maybe we have some little one-on-one training time. I'm happy to help you.
Sounds good.
Because I did find when I chaired a meeting on Monday, Gus, that it was hard to keep up on the agenda document when I'm continuously scrolling back and forth on the screen to try and figure out who's waving at me. So one of the things that you talked about was utilizing the raised hand. What you're talking about is a best practice. I wouldn't discourage us from coming out with a list of best practices. But as far as adopting something, I again want to just repeat, I'd like to see it go into our governance manual. And with that, I'm done. No more interruptions.
And they'll just change the application anyway.
Well, when I say, when I, I don't mean that we have to adopt it. It's just kind of like, here's the protocol on what you should be doing, you know, etiquette. Mary Ann, anything?
Yeah, well, no, I'm okay with that. Bring, give me a list of whatever. But I do have another thing I'd like to add. And I'm curious, if we're done with that subject, are we?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if it ever got sent out, but I'm thinking about EB5 again. Remember, I requested a few meetings ago that you guys send a letter with the mayor's signature to Mike McGuire and Jim Wood stating that we don't like it and we want to run it into the ground? Did anybody ever do that? Was there any follow-up on that?
You know, I really can't give you an answer on that. I know there were a few things that we've sent out to McGuire and Jim. And I just can't recall offhand.
Okay, well, if we haven't, could we please?
Yes, we'll take a look at it. Anything else, council members?
I would like to know, Mr. Mayor, if we can have our map from Kevin soon? Can you give me some timeline, Kevin? Mitigation map?
Well, I, hopefully, I'll have it to you tomorrow. I've been working on it today, so. Or Monday.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Cruz. I'm not understanding what you're asking for, a map?
Well, last time, we talked about a mitigation map. Actually, this is ongoing. But last time, we talked about a mitigation map that all of us could use as we plan for emergencies, where our sensitive communities, where our specific needs in terms of infrastructure in the town of Cloverdale and so on.
Okay. Councilmembers, anything else? Well, then I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Before I do that, I'd like to thank staff for taking part in the meeting, especially Irene for running the show and David for all of your hard work. So thank you. Good night, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Be safe.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.